To order at 6:06, we apologize for being a little late. Can join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Okay, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Spanish.
We have Alma Flores with us tonight. Alma, would you please introduce yourself?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Flores, y si necesito los servicios de un intérprete, estoy disponible en la esquinita. Gracias.
We have headsets for the hearing impaired if we need them. Dr. Sarves, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Oh, we need your mic on.
Okay. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognition.
Well, we're fortunate to have with us tonight Maddie Ranson and Ethan Davis, both seniors at San Marcos High School. They have a song or two for us. Would you just set up right here, please? And I think Maddie's going to describe how they came to us. I discovered them at an event where they were celebrating our students, their talents, and recognizing San Marcos.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maddie, as Dr. Sarves said, and this is Ethan, and we competed in a talent show called Royals Got Talent at San Marcos High School. It was a part of the Kids Helping Kids benefit that our AP Economics class puts on every year to raise money for the Unity Shop. And so, we didn't win, we placed in the top three of the talent show, but we were invited to perform at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and that is where the superintendent saw us perform and asked us if we'd play a couple songs here. I'm also a part of the San Marcos High School Vocal Music Department, and we recently had our Broadway Musical Theater Marathon, which was a great success. We're still counting up our pledges, so thank you so much for all of your support. We also have five choirs going to festivals this year, which is a first for San Marcos, so we're really excited about that. And now, we'll start. Ethan and I will be singing the songs Falling Slowly and If You Want Me from the movie Once. We sang Falling Slowly at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. (Music) I don't know you, but I want you all the more for that. Words fall through me and always fool me, and I can't react. Games that never amount to more than their men will play themselves out. Take this sinking boat and point it home, we've still got time. Raise your hopeful voice, you have a choice, you've made it now. Falling slowly, eyes that know me, and I can't go back. Moods that chase me and erase me and unpainted black. You have suffered enough and wored with yourself, it's time that you warn. Take this sinking boat and point it home, we've still got time. Raise your hopeful voice, you have a choice, you've made it now. Falling slowly, sing your melody, I'll sing along. I don't know you, but I want you all the more for that. So this is If You Want Me, and we're still needing the words, so. Are you really here, or am I dreaming? I can't tell dreams from true. For it's been so long since I've seen you, I can hardly remember your face anymore. When I get really lonely and the distance causes silence, and I think of you smiling with pride in your eyes, a lover that sighs. If you want me, satisfy me. If you want me, satisfy me. Do you really think that you believe me when others say I lie? I wonder if you could ever despise me, though you know I really try to better one to satisfy you, 'cause you're everything to me. And I'll do what you ask me if you let me be free. If you want me, satisfy me. 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 If you want me, satisfy me.
Thank you very much, Maddie and Ethan. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Did you get to sing at the marathon?
Yes, I did. I sang a duet with a fellow Madrigal Choir member.
Good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Carolyn Taro Brady in the back of the room here.
(Laughter) She's a great talker, Melmy Hall. Great musicians to be kissed.
All right.
Thank you, though.
Shall we go on with superintendent's report?
Go ahead, yes, please.
Well, last Thursday, marches were held across the state to protest public school cuts and the effect of those cuts on the quality of public education. Like to show you a chart that shows the losses in our district over the past four years. Those losses amount to $20 million in cuts to our budget. Our districts had a strong showing at the Thursday event, when parents certificated and classified staff, administrators, and board members joined hundreds of others in a peaceful march on State Street and rally at the Sunken Gardens. In the past four years alone, our districts have been cut $20 million, and the end of this state crisis is still not in sight, so there may be more to come, and you'll notice that on the top of this list, it shows the May revise coming up in just a couple of months with a question mark, so we don't know whether a $6 million cut from next year's budget is enough at this point in time. Now for the good news. Both Santa Barbara Community Academy and Peabody Charter School have hosted five-member California Distinguished School visitation teams that spent the day conducting classroom observations, interviews with staff, and meetings with stakeholders. School officials learned that the visitation teams will recommend both Santa Barbara Community Academy and Peabody Charter as California Distinguished Schools for 2010, so that was The Board will remember that we had a major discussion about Excellence for All, which is a report on Board focus goals. Toward the end of the week, we plan to send the Board an electronic copy of the draft document. We've been working on it, been adding to it. It does not yet have similar school ranks, which we are still expecting from the state, but the state is pretty pressed to get things done these days, and we will be sharing the draft document with the community. The background information on honors coursework in our secondary district was revised today and will be posted on the district website. I think I have the wrong announcement on this. We have the information sheet on the website, and we will have the final proposal on the website tomorrow. So, in fact, we'll take what has been called a proposal, and we'll show that as a background sheet or information sheet, so that everyone can take a look at how the proposal looks at this point. And our Board is scheduled to discuss and take action on that on March 23 at our regularly scheduled Board meeting. Good, thank you. The Bauer Foundation has offered a $30,000 to $40,000 commitment for one year to continue the work of the district's outreach coordinator and consultant. The Bauer contribution is offered on the condition that the district provides a matching amount. The outreach coordinator and consultant focuses on gangs and youth violence. The position ended at the end of February, and Board, we may want to talk about scheduling a future Board agenda item when we reach that point at the end of our agenda, when we talk about future agenda items. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of reports and news items about the district and school matters. A copy of the February 26 Board Brief is on display in the reception area or can be provided through my office. In our last Board Brief, we included a letter that we received from the International Baccalaureate Program granting IB candidate status to Harding University Partnership School already. That's something that usually takes many years just to get going, so we are expecting a visitation team from an IB consultant this spring, and we'll keep you updated on that. And we included a number of research articles on two-way immersion programs. In fact, we have some other articles, and we'll be including those in the Board Briefs to come. The Junior League, let's see, find the right one here. The Junior League and our school district are working together on Spring Into Health Day on March 20, from 10 o'clock to 1:00 p.m. The free event, which will be held at Franklin School, is designed to promote healthy living. You have copies of this on the dais, and there are copies on the side table. Upcoming events in March, and there are copies of this list as well, and please refer to our district website for more information. We have Dos Pueblos High School presenting Curtains, the 2007 Tony-winning murder mystery musical, beginning March 12. The District String Festival takes place on March 17 at San Marcos High School in the auditorium. Lachaina Junior High presents High School Musical, beginning March 18. Galita Valley Junior High School's Advanced and Beginning Band Orchestra and Jazz Ensemble Concert will be held on March 25, and there are a number of other events on this list, so please refer to our district list. And Mr. Herron, I believe we have a student here. Is Amy Randzehoff here?
No, actually, I'm kidding.
Oh, very good. Please come up to the podium and give us a report. I assume you're a student from San Marcos High School as well? Great.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ellen Gleason, and I'm filling in for San Marcos' Board of Education representative, who couldn't be here tonight. The past few months have been very busy at San Marcos, and I'm just here to give you a few highlights from what has been going on. As you've heard, San Marcos' AP Economics class held their Kids Helping Kids event at their Granada in January with a performance by Five for Fighting. And for those of you who don't know, Kids, San Marcos Kids for Kids is a huge project for the seniors in AP Econ at San Marcos. It's a completely student-organized and student-run event designed to raise money for the Santa Barbara Unity Shop. This year, our students went from company boardroom to company boardroom, looking for sponsors for the event. The event nearly sold out, and the San Marcos Kids Helping Kids raised over $140,000 for the Unity Shop. Disability Awareness Day was a huge success in February. Classes came into the library to hear different speakers who have been affected by various disabilities. It was a very moving day for all the students who participated, and we hope to have the same event next year. San Marcos also participated in Westmont's annual math competition, in which almost a dozen high schools participated. There were two teams of four students, one for underclassmen and one for upperclassmen, and our upperclassmen team brought home the gold medal for the College Bowl part of the competition, in which teams faced off in a fast-paced question-and-answer round. San Marcos Spring Sports have just begun, and boys' basketball season has just ended. We are very proud of our boys' varsity basketball team for winning Channel League this year. And the WASC Committee visited our school last week to review our school. There were countless classroom observations and meetings in which various leadership students attended to give a student's point of view about our school. We feel and hope that it all went very well, and we are eager to get WASC's evaluation in May. And finally, the San Marcos Vocal Department put on a Sing-a-Thong last week. It was an eight-hour event in which students took turns singing Broadway songs consecutively. People could drop in at any time to watch part of this free and impressive event, and over 115 songs were sung.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Good job. C2, Board Comment and Correspondence. Dr. Noel.
There may be a little time left, but for anyone interested in art students, art classes, the Renoir exhibit at the LA County Museum of Art is just superb, not to be missed.
Mrs. Parker?
Three quick things. One is that, as a Board member, walking last Thursday, obviously, there were several of us there, that was such a powerful experience, and I really feel like there's much more that we as a Board can do in terms of advocating with Sacramento, and I really hope that we, over the course of the spring, unify and make our voice heard as a Board and not just as individual Board members about the situation with state budget cuts and education, because it's so critical. Mr. Herron and I were at Adams today, where we got to see the first of our district's school gardens going in, thanks to the Orphelia Foundation, and they've been doing it across the county. There were lots of press there, the kids were having a fantastic time. If you get a chance, go stop by Adams. It's going to be coming into several other of our schools as well, but this was great to finally get that off the starting block. And finally, I know that the Office of Civil Rights, the Federal Office of Civil Rights, has started to come out with new guidelines for districts. They're starting to raise expectations about making sure that there is equality in school programs and in the way students are treated, and I would really like to get a Board Brief on what you expect to get and what you have gotten as soon as possible, because it's actually relevant to some of the discussions that we're having.
Mrs. Cudero?
Given that we're making announcements at this point and talking about these things, I just wanted to remind the Board and also members of the public that on Thursday night, there will be the Second Annual Women, I'm going to flub the title, I think, but Women's Empowerment Conference at Franklin Elementary School, and it's free and open to the public, so if people are interested in attending, I think that's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate Women's History Month. And also, just on Monday night, two of our high schools played for the CIF Championship in soccer out at the university, was one of the largest attendances that I've seen, well, I, sorry, I have to say, I didn't actually see it, but my husband and my son were there, representing our family, and they said the attendance was just overwhelming, and Santa Barbara High School, our alma mater, did prevail, so.
You had to get that in there.
But, still, for two of our schools to be playing for the CIF Championship was pretty exciting, so.
Mrs. Deacon?
I feel like quite often, I don't get to spend enough time with the kids, especially in our elementary schools, and so I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed reading to fourth graders, A Tall Tale at Harding School. Mrs. Parker was there also, and the level of questions they asked was fantastic, and their teacher knew everything there was to know about the Missouri River, which was also fantastic, because I didn't have all of those details at my fingertips, but it was really a pleasure. And Roosevelt School is going to be having a readathon also on the 12th of March, so if there are volunteers out there who would like to read, and I'm sure, actually, all of our schools would welcome volunteer readers to come in and read to their classes, and it's a great experience.
I was lucky. I have a wife who loves to read, and so she got the pleasure of reading at Harding. And also, I had the pleasure this week of Adam School this morning, and I'd like to make a plug for the Rotary Club, for 20 years, they've worked at Adams, and the beds they made for vegetables and flowers, et cetera, I wish I could have them in my yard. Fantastic work by the Rotary Club. And I also had the pleasure of going to Washington School and sitting in on a Math Bowl class that took 18 children, fourth graders, to try to teach them mathematical information that will help them succeed in the Math Bowl, and I'm happy to say that on the quiz they gave, right at the front, I got 80 percent, so I felt.
Yay, Mr. Herron.
I felt I'm almost as good as fourth graders, but I was told that it wasn't good enough to be in the Math Bowl, so. But the two I missed, they had talked about the week before, so I plead that I wasn't there, so I didn't retain the information. But to watch those kids and watch them work those problems, and some of them, just off the top of their head, answer those questions, is fantastic. So, thank you all very much. Mrs. Parker?
I just want to chime in, we have so many fantastic Rotary Clubs in Santa Barbara, it's the North Side Rotary that has the particular relationship with Adams, and they just do a terrific job over time.
That's great. C3, Announcement of Closed Session Action. On B1, those results will be taken care of under E4 tonight. B2, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, no report. B3, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, no report. Public Comment, C4.
Yes, we have five speaker slips for public comments, five speakers for public comment. We start out with Kate Smith. Ms. Smith, you have two slips, but one is for the consent agenda, and that is taken at the same time as the public comment, so you'll have three minutes for both of those, followed by.
Three minutes, three minutes total.
Lanny Evenstein.
President Herron, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, I have many names, and I wear many hats, but this one takes the cake. My daughter, Emily Rose Smith, will turn 21 on Friday, March 12, and I wanted to invite you to this celebration. As you know, my daughter is developmentally delayed. When she was diagnosed by Dr. Peter Hassler at two years old, I wrote to my friends and my family, Emily's Song. Love me with smiles and laughter, love me with all of your heart. I will teach you patience and understanding. I will share sweet victories. I will show you the wisdom of your soul. My daughter, Emily Rose Smith, has fulfilled her promise, and I'm asking that you come to her party. Friday is not a long way off. I have tried to invite her teachers, who embraced her with all love. They were her guardian angels as she went through this district, and we encountered some very, very severe problems. I was accosted by Dr. Sarves when I was inviting her master teacher, a dear friend and colleague, and our neighbor. 5:30, there will be cocktails and hors d'oeuvres and house tours, because it will be held at our home, 729 Mission Canyon Road. It's right up from the Mission, well-known, well-beloved. DH, you're approving a consulting contract to conduct personnel complaints in special education. You will be paying $1,200 plus $300, which would be lodging and meals. How much? When will it end? This is outrageous.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Just talk to me. I'll tell you about special education.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Lanny Evenstein, followed by Darlene Moore.
President Herron, members of the Board, Dr. Sarves. First of all, I'd like to comment that, though I sometimes represent the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association, I'm speaking tonight as an individual, and I'm speaking on the topic of the survey approved at a recent Board meeting, and to conduct a survey in the secondary district or the entire districts to see what support there would be among the general public for revenue enhancement in the elementary or secondary districts. And I want to say, I think it's an excellent idea to conduct a survey, speaking as an individual. I've long advocated appropriate funding for public education in our area, and where appropriate to go to the taxpayers for that sort of funding. I think that this survey will be able to give you good information. I would like to encourage you to. I would like to encourage you to have a broad survey that would include program options as well as capital. And let the community give more input as to what they value as their highest and best use for funds that are generated from this, from the community at this time. Whether they think that program is the highest, is the highest purpose in light of the many budget cuts they've been, or whether additional capital funds would be the most important. In addition, I think it's vital to get the opinion of stakeholders in the district, teachers and parents in particular. Which do they think is most important? Do they think that program is more important at this time, or capital? And I think that that's important as well, to, in addition, surveying the general public to survey stakeholders and talk with them as well. My own view is that program is the higher priority in the districts at this time, particularly in the secondary district, as a result of the cuts that have been made. As well, there's been about $100 million or so that the secondary district has spent on capital in the past decade or so since Measure V. And between the original Measure V state matching funds and interest on that bond. Finally, I hope that it's really an open question at this point in time, what direction the districts will move in this, in this area? And that you will...
Thirty seconds.
That you will welcome input from the community, from individuals who think there should be increased funding for local schools. I hope everyone on the board thinks that's a good thing, and you want people who say "we're for more funding for local schools." So at some point, although as I mentioned, I'm here as an individual, the Taxpayers Association, after our education committee meets, may have additional communication to the district on this topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. I noticed in the paper Sunday, and your wedding, and we congratulate you. I was at the wedding, so I know firsthand.
Darlena Moore, followed by Carolyn Renaud.
Greetings. I believe the children are our future. Let's teach them well and let them lead the way. I believe in that. Greetings. I am a concerned parent. My name is Darlena Moore. Special needs equals love, therefore love equals change. How much funding does the State of California Special Education receive for each special education child? I really would like to have that in writing. But what I have found is that in special so-called, with all due respect, education, attendance is what equals money for the district and the state, and has nothing to do with the child or their education. My son, upon December 19th, who just turned 18, received a certificate of attendance, which from my understanding is regulated by the State of California Education. What does this teach my son Jamal and other special ed students? It teaches them to just show up and that they don't have to earn anything at all. Certificate of Attendance Upon Graduation proves this fact, that he did not get credit for his schoolwork that was earned, but just credit for attendance. This goes against free and appropriate public education. Special education students are truly special, too. It means, by giving certificate of education, it means F-A-K-E instead of F-A-P-E. With all due respect, it means that teachers and administrators and the state get and keep money in their pockets for free, using my son, for example, and other special education students as a pawn. This is illegal. This is stealing. My son deserves more than just receiving a certificate of attendance just for his body being there, which has nothing to do with education, as any other special education student has earned, earned his or her fair reward. This again goes against F-A-P-E and IDEA laws. This district and the State of California Department of Education owes my son and other special ed students an education, not appropriate attendance, as his certificate of attendance states. In prior IEP meetings, information was withheld from me, the Selpa Handbook, FC, FICMAT report, and I was retaliated by being labeled hostile when trying to advocate for my son. Totally illegal. It says here that Dr. Stephen Morfit is gonna be, is a retired Selpa director, is being paid $1,200 per day, plus meals and lodging? For what? This is serious. Please consider my plea, for not only Jamal, but other special ed students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Carolyn Renaud, followed by Lauren Mason.
When Special Education Administrator, when Special Education Administrator David Gilbertson spoke out about the abuses of low-income Hispanic special education students and violations of their rights, he was first summarily demoted to school psychologist position. Mr. Sarvis claimed that this was needed because his position just wasn't needed anymore. The Special Education Administrator position wasn't needed anymore. I think we all knew that wasn't true then. And as we've all seen from the FICMAT report, it proven, it was proven that that wasn't true. We not only didn't, did need his position, we needed more special ed administrator positions. Was Mr. Sarvis held accountable for this? No. For this retaliation? No. When David Gilbertson continued to speak out and file complaints about the abuses of these low-income Hispanic children, he was then involuntary transferred to various schools multiple times. He wasn't given a phone for six months into the school year, and then only after filing multiple complaints. Now, you are trying to use this layoff situation to get rid of him. You people should be ashamed of yourselves. You certainly should not be in charge of our schools. David Gilbertson used to have lots of people ahead of, ahead of him on the seniority list, on the layoff list, because he had seniority. It's been very apparent over the last couple of months that you were angling to try to get rid of him with the layoff situation. Annette Cordero, whose votes, with rare exceptions, and so far as I can tell, only when it doesn't matter, her votes generally do not help the low-income Hispanic population, despite what she says. And often, her votes are for things that are damaging to this population. She started by bringing up the concept of using bilingual as a criteria for the layoffs for school psychologists. This appeared to be a thinly veiled ploy to get to David on the list, because while David has spoken out bravely against this district administration to try to protect the rights of these vulnerable, low-income Hispanic students, he's not bilingual. But it turns out that you people don't even need to play that card. David has now received a layoff notice and has been told that he has no seniority because his two years at the district office don't count.
Thirty seconds.
This is simply outrageous, and it's very obvious what you are doing. And I hope he sues the H out of you, all you people, for this vicious retaliation. Using your criteria, a person could work at the district office for 30 years, then be laid off for someone who has been at a school site for one year. This is ridiculous. It's very clear what you do, what you're doing. The appearance of being respectable people is clearly nothing but a facade. You know, I watch you dealing with the budget issues and knowing that you're stabbing people in the back behind the scenes, and kids' lives are being destroyed by you. You really should be ashamed of yourselves, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Renaud. Lauren Mason?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Mason. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Lauren Mason, and my two children are GATE students in this district. One is in eighth grade and the other is in the 11th grade. I support having a GATE program. It seems that the GATE program is a very contentious and emotional issue, and it looks like the board will be making changes to the GATE program at its next meeting. I'm not going to rehash all the feelings both sides have on this issue. I stand before you with what I believe could be an equitable solution to the elimination of the GATE label, if that's the desire of the school board. The handout that I've presented you is my proposal. As you will notice, starting next year in 2010 and 11, I show that no seventh-grade students will be in the GATE program. Only the current students that are in the GATE program will continue, so that means eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. The following year, in 2011 and 2012, the GATE program would be phased out of all the middle schools. And Gates, and the GATE classes would only be taught in ninth and 10th grade. Again, the following year after that, the GATE program would be phased out for all ninth graders in high school, and GATE classes would only be taught for 10th grade students. At the end of the 2012-2013 school year, all GATE classes will be completely phased Currently, GATE classes are taught for eighth-grade students in history, math, science, and English, and for ninth and 10th grade students in math and English. As I speak to you, the school district is continuing to raise money and asking for Phone-A-Thon volunteers for their GATE program, which begins next week, as they are trying to eliminate it. And these are being sent home with the students, asking for volunteers for that Phone-A-Thon. The school district has asked parents and students to support the GATE program. If they choose to eliminate this program, they should allow the students that are in the program to complete what they started. My proposal could be a win-win for the district and for the parents and students that have worked so hard to support this GATE program.
Thirty seconds.
I would like to caution the board members about the possible unintended consequences of your decision, that your decision may have on other great programs, such as the IB program at Dos Pueblos and the new accelerated academic program at San Marcos. These great programs may be affected if you are not careful about your reasons for eliminating the GATE label in this district. I've also handed Mr. Smith another handout, talking about how I believe the district could save at least $26,000 with what I've shown in that proposal. I'd be very happy to come back and talk about that at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. C5, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to accept with appreciation.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Consent Calendar, Item D. Any recommendations for moving to a later time?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
And I'll second that.
Under discussion, I would just like to compliment the Safe Schools Reports. They were complete, they were more or less uniform, which made it easier for the schools, but that the schools also had a chance to put their goals in there, which was good. I was a little alarmed at the amount of attention on bullying or anti-bullying programs. It's something I think we need to look at more closely, because if the schools are feeling that there's bullying going on, I think we as a board should be a little bit more aware of that, too. But it was a good job by all the schools, and I really appreciate it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, Action Items. E1, Approval of Positive Certification of Second Interim Financial Report.
Eric Smith, our deputy superintendent for business services, will introduce us.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Education Code Section 42130 requires the district to submit two financial interim reports to the county education office each fiscal year. The second interim report, which is before you tonight, covers the financial transactions, actually from July 1st through January 31st, and extrapolates how we should end, year-end, based on a projection. The criteria for the interim reports is always a certification of either positive, meaning that you can meet your current year and subsequent two-year obligations, qualified, meaning that you may not be able to meet your current year and subsequent two-year fiscal obligations, or negative, meaning that you definitely cannot meet your current and subsequent two-year obligations. We're recommending a positive certification largely because of the tough choices the board has made to get in front of the severe fiscal straits that both the State of California and the school districts have experienced this year. What I'd like to do is direct your attention to the booklet. I will walk you through this. This will be both the interim report as well as the multi-year projections, which are required during the interim reporting period. And if we could start with page one, you can see that for the interim report, we use the industry standard, which is the School Services of California Financial Dart Board, and the assumptions that are included within. We briefly summarize the general fund. You can see the differences between the first and second interim on page one in terms of all funds. Then as we move down, general fund revenues, transfers, and sources, you can see the total amount of revenues and the difference between the first and second interim report. And as we turn the page to page two, you can see both the unrestricted and the restricted breakdown and the difference between the first and second interim report. You can see we're at about $119 million right now, combined between unrestricted and restricted, and that's combined elementary and secondary district in the general fund. As we move to page three, we have a summary of our unrestricted revenues, and you can see once again in tabular format, we look at the difference between the first and second interim. Slight variance there. Below that, you see the differences between restricted revenues, and then the summary on the next page, which is page four. And as you follow that through, the A minus B equals C, you can see there's a total revenue difference of about $830,000, mostly attributed to restricted revenues. As we move down, looking at the summary of unrestricted expenditures, you can see there's a variance there between the first and second of about 252136 to the negative. And then as you move down to the restricted expenditures, which are summarized at the bottom of page five, you see a significant variance there. And that's largely because we receive categoricals later in the year, and we don't have all those booked when we adopt our first interim. And so as they come in, then we have to allocate them. So as we move over to page six, as is customary, we look at the major object groupings on the combined report and look at variances that happened within the major object groupings. Under the revenue limit sources, there were no significant changes between the first and second interim. Under federal revenue, there's an increase of about $59,000 between the first and second interim, largely due to the accounting treatment of Tier III categoricals, and a decrease in the school and library grant, which is a function of state reductions. Under other state revenue, there's an increase of $10,708 in other state revenue between the first and second interim due to special ed transportation. There was a bump there. In other local revenue, there's a variance of $282,000. And what that has to deal with is when the board actually approved the plan to pay back the one-time reduction in state funding, you remember, we basically swept the balance, the unencumbered balance in the workers' compensation fund. We hadn't actually made that transaction, and we discovered that during this reporting period, and so now it's reflected. So that accounts for that variance. On the expenditures for certificated salaries, there's an increase of $742,000. That's largely due to hiring additional teaching staff. When we allocate monies that are in restricted programs in a placeholder, and then we end up, you know, hiring people through employment agreements, or hourly's or temporary, then we move them to the certificated salaries. Similarly, classified salaries, about $561,000 variance between the first and second interim, really in terms of hiring of staff using restricted categorical and Tier III categorical funds, because you remember, the sites do still have 70% of the Tier III categorical funds. We only take 30% for district purposes. Books and supplies, there's a significant decrease of a million, about a million from books and supplies. And once again, that's the offset. The money left that placeholder in books and supplies and moved up to classified salaries and certificated salaries. and certificated salaries, once those decisions were made, and that's pretty traditional with respect to how we deal with categorical programs. Other operating expenses, unrestricted operating expenses increased from the first interim by about $343,000 due to increased contracted services, including special ed transportation. And under capital outlay, under that major object grouping, there was a decrease of about $25,000 due to the reallocation of equipment expenses under $5,000 to books and supplies, because we make a distinction in terms of how we account for things between $500 and $5,000, and what's over $5,000, and what we count as capital, and what's counted as a book and supply. And that's prescribed by GASB 34. As we move over to page seven, there's a pie chart that shows you the distribution of general fund unrestricted and restricted revenues. As you can see, about 77% of the district's budget is unrestricted on the revenue side. You know, our largest revenue source is property taxes in the elementary and revenue limit in the secondary district, soon to be property taxes in both districts. As you know, revenue limit districts are basically limited in terms of the amount of money they can get per student by state formula, and that formulates in aggregate what we call a revenue limit entitlement. Once you exceed that entitlement in local property taxes, you become basic aid and you get to keep those. And we're straddling one district in, one district out. Given the state's dire fiscal condition and the revenue limit deficit, we anticipate the secondary will be in basic aid next year, unless there's some miraculous economic recovery that nobody seems to see coming. As we move down, because ADA is both important in terms of revenue limit enrollment in ADA, but also in terms of basic aid, although it seems counterintuitive, the less students you have in basic aid, the better, because you have more property taxes to distribute among those, as opposed to revenue limit, where you're always inclined to have more students to bring in revenue. It's important to be able to switch back and forth and think about what district's in what, and what's important financially for each district. So as we move over to page eight, you can see what's happened with regard to our enrollment in ADA since '07-'08, and we'll go over this in the multi-year projection, but what we're seeing is kind of a flattening of the, you know, pretty severe decline we'd seen in both districts. And when we look in the multi-year projection, you'll see that the elementary is pretty much flat, and we're projecting it to be flat, and we'll probably have to have a discussion about why we think it's flat. And then, the secondary district is really tapered from declining about 300 to 350 students a year to about 150 is what we're projecting, based on what happened last year. If we move to page nine, there's a little bit of narrative about the lottery. A lot of people have the idea that the lottery was some kind of salvation for school districts. Actually, the lottery in most school districts represents less than 2% of income in the general fund budget, and as you can see from this bar chart, it's highly volatile. Over the history of the lottery, it's fluctuated anywhere from $90 per ADA all the way up to $175 per ADA. Right now, we're anticipating about $123 per ADA, with 110 of that being unrestricted, and about $13 of that being restricted due to instructional materials per Proposition If you turn to page 10, we have a pie chart that shows general fund expenditures by category. In this particular chart, you can see the expenditures by category for both restricted and unrestricted combined. You know, it's the major object groupings, actually a little bit more descriptive, where we show classified and confidential non-management, management, certificated non-management, other outgo, capital outlay, operating expenses, books and supplies. I think it's useful to look at this chart and then look at the next chart, especially when you look at classified confidential non-management, management, and certificated non-management. And then you move to the next page, which is just unrestricted general fund expenditures by category. You can see management stays at 5% in both, but you can see that certificated actually bumps up a little bit from 46 to 50, because now you're talking about teachers that are funded through restricted sources as well. And classified actually dips a little bit when you actually look at unrestricted. So the proportion is greater of classified positions than just unrestricted in that pie. And then, when you look at unrestricted, or rather, the other way around, unrestricted actually goes down to 13% rather than the 15% when they're combined. Page 12, we can look at things in SACS by function. You can see the breakout there on a pie chart in terms of instructional services, direct instruction, data processing, superintendent and board, debt service, transfers out, plant services, general administration, community services, ancillary and pupil services, and those are all categories that the school accounting manual prescribes for us, and we can come back to talk about that, if there's questions about that. One of the things we constantly watch is contributions from the unrestricted general fund to the restricted side of the general fund. As a rule, we want, to the extent possible, restricted funds to pay for themselves or be self-contained. Obviously, there's some significant exceptions in terms of chronic underfunding of programs that almost all school districts in the state of California have significant local contributions. You can see that in our district, the biggest programs requiring contributions are special education, K-3 class size reduction, and routine restricted maintenance. Actually, K-3 class size reduction is actually kind of a quasi-unrestricted program, because in theory, if you made money off K-3 class size reduction, which nobody does, you could use that money to do anything you want with it. Special education, the revenues are actually restricted for that specific purpose. And routine restricted maintenance account is basically an imposed requirement as a receipt of us receiving dollars through the state school facilities program. Districts that don't participate don't have the 3%, which now we have flexibility to reduce until 13, 14. So if you look at the contributions, the largest obviously is special ed, projected to be about 7.7 million, or about 38% of the entire district's special ed program. And you can see, as we move down, the breakout of significant encroachments in the pie chart. Once again, I'd like to reiterate that we're using the Meals for Needy add-on on the secondary's revenue limit for the unrestricted general fund, and basically transferring it to the cafeteria fund rather than retaining it in the unrestricted general fund. But it also is important to note that Meals for Needy will go away as the revenue limit goes away. So since it's a function of being an add-on to the revenue limit, when the revenue limit goes away, it goes away. And I know we haven't had that discussion, but we've had that discussion with Nancy, and she's aware of it. If we move to page 14, you can see the contributions. You can see, we don't have a contribution in 9th grade CSR because it's tier-three, and it's kind of blended, or the parcel tax has picked up part of it, so that's a notable difference from what you've seen in the past. You can see for K-3 class size reduction, the amount of money we're contributing above and beyond the K-3 money we get from the state, and that's largely a function of when K-3 class size reduction was quantified by the state, it was basically all projected using entry-level teachers. Well, once K-3 CSR happened, all your mature teachers went there, so your expense has always been much greater than your revenue. And we just started tracking this about a year and a half ago, but in most districts, it's pretty much camouflaged because of that, because it's an unrestricted program, so you never really look at what's it cost for you to operate it. Community Day, you can see the contribution there. We talked about that recently. Federal and state special education, a small amount to GATE, home-to-school transportation and special ed transportation, and then the other significant contribution is due to the routine restricted maintenance account. On page 15, you guys hear me talk a lot about the structural deficit or the operating deficit, and I always talk about the ongoing imbalance between revenues and expenditures, but this is a great graphic illustration. The chart below reflects the combined district's net change in the unrestricted ending balance. A positive number, one with the bar above the center line, reflects the district had more unrestricted income than expenditures in that particular fiscal year. A deficit amount reflected with the bar below the center line indicates the district had more unrestricted expenditures and income. In other words, you were deficit spending. So what you can see here is that the net change in the unrestricted ending balance is 8, 9, little positive, 9, 10. You can see what's happening to the ending balance, and you can see projected 10, 11. But then, when you look at this, and you look at this in relationship to the district's net ending balance, you'll see because we got ahead of it and made cuts, we're not actually sinking. And if you move to page 16, you can look at the net ending balance in the districts, which is our reserve account is embedded in that, and you can see the significant ending balance we had in '07-'08. You can see us basically burning it down, and then you'll see in our multi-year projections, because we've made cuts, it's not as bad as it was, but it's still not great, and we'll talk about why that is. So the budget really shows the ability of the district to meet its current year obligations. However, the operating deficits still persist, and we'll talk about the reasons why that is and why we're not out of the woods yet. I want to talk a little bit about a few of the other funds, most notably the Child Development Fund. As I mentioned, on February 23rd, the Child Development Fund took a significant financial hit over the last couple of years, and lost a significant amount of money at fiscal year and in '08-'09, about $263,000. I think at this point in time, because of child development funding being so different, I mean, it's time, my recommendation would have somebody from the outside come in and look at it. And I know we've talked a little bit about both a programmatic and fiscal audit, because they seem to go hand in hand, and so I'm hoping to get some feedback on that issue, because we just can't, we can't continue to go the way we are. So we move to the cafeteria fund. You can see a small change, basically no change in the ending balance between first and second interim. The building funds, you'll see, we don't have a lot of money there, and most of the money's being burned down. You can note that as you go through all the building funds, as I like to say, they're And in the Self-Insurance Fund, you'll actually see that difference I talked about, where we moved that ending balance on page 26, and we moved it into the general fund, and you can see it leaving there. And then, we're on page 28, which is the multi-year projection. A couple of things I want to talk about relative to the multi-year projection before Meg comes up, and I think she, do you have a spreadsheet, Meg? Okay. Once again, we use School Services of California's Financial Dart Board and the assumptions. Obviously, the thing that's significant for us is looking at the revenue limit entitlement and where our property taxes are in relationship to that in future years. One of the things we haven't talked about is that when you become basic aid, something that was enacted last year is what they call the Fair Share Reduction, which is basically a 5.8% hit off your tier-three, it's 5.8% of the revenue limit before deficit applied against your tier-three, tier-two, and if you don't have enough money, all the way into your tier-one categoricals. Well, we got some interesting news today, which we were unaware of, and it was pleasant news, because we've seen what that calculation looks like, and Meg will show you the calculation, and then she will show you if you remained in revenue limit, which is even more horrific. But what we heard today in talking to School Services of California is the way basic aid works is, in the first year that you actually have more property taxes than your revenue limit entitlement, you get to keep your supplemental taxes. And I've always heard one, but Meg seems to think two, I don't know, one or two. So in talking to Michelle Huntun at School Services of California, the state doesn't perceive you or consider you as basic aid until your supplemental taxes are totally taken away. So what that means is the fair share hit won't be imposed until that occurs, which buys us a couple more years, probably in each district. We also, we have some theories about whether we'll be able to skate on other things, but that's more breathing room, and we're happy to hear it. So I think I'm going to have Meg come up and kind of show, this all wraps into kind of the basic aid calculations, what the fair share reduction would look like if it was actually implemented, and the fact that we think that that's going to be postponed for a little bit, which could give us some breathing room. And believe me, I was fretting over that, because as you see in the elementary and secondary, if we had to implement it, it's not like the board would have that much discretion unless you decided to backfill all that categorical money with unrestricted, which would make your cut even deeper, but since the large share of categoricals go directly to the site, it would have a devastating effect on program.
Is there hard copy on the table of this?
Is there a hard, I think there is.
No, there's not a hard copy of this, but we can get those.
Are you talking about this, or are you talking about this spreadsheet?
This.
Yeah, I don't think this.
Well, I want, good evening, and see, we did bring good news. We were really happy about that today. And the reason why I say it's two years for the supplemental taxes is it's this year, they don't know we're basic aid yet, so they're not going to take our supplemental away. However, once we are declared basic aid at P2 this year, we get to keep the supplemental this year, we get to keep the supplemental in 10, 11. That's why it's two years, because they don't know supplemental taxes yet. So here we are at second interim for 2010-11, and here's our revenue limit subject to deficit, and this is what we take the calculation off of, the 5.81%. And Dave, if you scroll down to the end, down here, it equals $1.5 million. If we had remained in revenue limit, we would have had an additional $3.2 million because of the 18.355%.
And that's just the elementary?
This is just in the elementary. If you go up to the high school, a little further down, Dave, we would have 3.9 million in the basic aid fair share. This would be not in 10, this is 11, 12, so we're talking about 11, 12, 12, 13, 14, 15. We would start to get hit with the fair share, so that's kind of out there. But if we had to do it today for 10, 11, we would have to have 3.9 million in fair share cuts, but we would have had an additional 8.5 million due to the 18% deficit, if we were revenue limit. So we are getting a better fair share, but it's still, if we took that 1.5 out of the elementary, it would wipe out their tier-three, go into tier-one, tier-two a little bit, and in 600,000 into tier-one.
Excuse me, Meg, could you state again what the 18% fair share deficit is, so that everyone's clear about that?
The 18% is the revenue limit deficit. The 5.81% is the percentage of the basic aid fair share.
Yeah, maybe you can walk through that whole calculation.
Okay. So what you would do is you take the revenue limit subject to deficit, which in this case, this is 9, 10, this is on the secondary district, and you times this number by 5.81%, and you would get 3.9 million.
That's the fair share.
That's the fair share. If you went further, if you took this number, this is the 18.355 deficit amount, it reduces it from 63 million down to 55 million. That's what we're losing because of the deficit, which if you add those two together, it's like $12 million. That's what we're losing every year on the revenue limit, if we were stayed in revenue limit, which we are.
But you wouldn't add those two, because they're mutually exclusive, correct?
Yes, but I'm just saying, the total loss to our school district and the secondary district is $12 million. But if we were in revenue lim, if we were basic aid, we would take the 3.9 share if we were in it for two years. So we have a two-year reprieve. Is that confusing enough?
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand.
You can't take both.
I understood.
No, you do not take both.
So the 12?
There's not a $12 million figure. You're either, it's either the 3.9 or the 8.5. They're mutually exclusive.
Can I?
But you can see, if you were to remain in revenue limit, you're taking a huge hit.
Yeah, but if you were in the revenue limit, this is what, this is what your total deficited revenue limit, it comes to, that it's decreased by 12, almost 12 million.
Mrs. Deegan?
Yeah, I think people are getting confused adding these numbers with what you're saying on the 12. You're losing 12 million just based on the deficit.
Right.
Right. And I'm clear on this point, but I just have to say, it sounds like we hit the sweet spot. Is that not right in terms of the timing?
Well, let me tell you, because if you look at, we just got this information today. today. And the issues we've been, I've been laying up nights thinking about is if we have to make all the, these categorical cuts, which, you know, that's industry standard. You don't let categoricals bleed onto the unrestricted general fund. Well, all our categoricals go out to the sites, pretty much. And so you're talking about scorched earth in terms of curtailing programs. So you can look at it, I think the good news we got was that because of the supplemental tax issue, it's likely these things will be postponed. But I would say that if the fair share reduction was never implemented, which just as a new occurrence in the last two years, we really would have hit the sweet spot. So we're not happy about two things. One, being on the cusp, because that makes it more difficult. And then, two, the fair share reduction being implemented on basic aid districts where this is a fairly recent occurrence. But if you look at the alternative of the fair share versus taking those additional hits in revenue limit, yeah, it's something to be happy about.
When will we know if we are basic aid this year in the elementary?
P-two, April fifteenth. Well, it won't, we won't, it won't be publicized until probably July. But that's when, we, we know. When that ADA comes in, that ADA count comes in at P-two. I want to point out here, on eleven, twelve, where it says one-point-four million here, this is what we're projecting to have, that deep, you know, pretty good sizable basic aid right there. But if you, the supplemental in this case was not removed. And so there is not, we're getting about nine-hundred thousand dollars in supplemental, so we will still be basic aid. But we will also have on this year, the five-point-eight-one percent or whatever the state decides. The loophole, the loophole in all of this is we have no idea if the state is smart enough to know that we are in this gray area. So we don't know if they're going to say, wow, they're basic aid, but they haven't gotten rid of their supplemental yet, so are we going to charge them the five-point-eight or we not?
And the thing that goes hand in hand with that is we surmise that this hundred-and-ninety ADA, per ADA hit, the revenue limit districts would somehow increase that five-point-eight-one to a larger percentage. But because we're in this limbo land, whether we'll dodge that bullet, we just don't know.
Okay.
It's a big bullet. Okay. Okay, so I'm on page one-hundred-and-thirty. This is the unrestricted second interim multi-year projections, and I'm in column C, two thousand and ten, eleven. And we've basically gone over what I just presented up there. And I want to start with A-one-H, where it says, plus other adjustments, basic aid, charter schools, object ADA, blah, blah, blah. That one-point-one million dollars is the excess property taxes. And it's one-point-five in the high, in the eleven, twelve. Going down, we're on other state revenues. You can see a pretty large decrease there. That's, before I knew this, I was anticipating taking the one-point-five fair share. So I've decreased the revenue there by one-point-five-eight, but one-point-five-two-three. And in the second column on the eleven, twelve, goes down to four-point-four million. This is the one-point-five from the elementary and the three-point-nine in the high school. That's because that's what we thought was going to happen. As soon as you're declared basic aid, we thought it was going to take the fair share. Now we know differently. So these are, within a week, my multi-year projections are kind of out the door. I want to also state that the six-million dollars worth of cuts that you voted on on February twenty-third, they're in this ten, eleven column, every single one of them. So we've contemplated that. I want to bring your attention down to the certificated salaries. You see the four-million dollars there that it's in the cost of, and living adjustment, but that's just because I'm limited to space. But you remember when we took the certificated salaries from nine, ten on the unrestricted side and moved them to the restricted side using the SFSF money?
Which is ORA.
This is a test. Do you remember? Okay, well, we did that. And we put them to the restricted side. In ten, eleven, we have to bring them back. And you'll see the corresponding number on the other side of the budget, which is the restricted side.
So basically, that's when we moved the certificated expense using the ORA dollars on a one-time base as we moved four-point-three or four-point-seven million over. And that's one of the reasons our fund balance was bolstered last year. But that was a one-time deal, was a stopgap. So now we, things go back to the way they were, and you have that ongoing expense and not as much revenue.
Exactly. The three-point-nine are.
Can, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
I mean, how much longer do you think you have on this?
I can.
No, I mean, we.
Not that much more.
We can go to the, I mean, really, the basic, what I was going to say is that we have the six million in here, we have one-point-five million also taken out at expenses, because if you lose the revenue for the fair share, we took it out. We put, that's a placeholder in the five thousands. And we can then go on to page one-thirty-five, and it shows that we do make our reserve out for each of the years. However, we go from six-point-four-nine to three-point-one-four. So we're barely there.
But we're not negative fund balance in the second subsequent year. And so we'll continue to do a variety of things to see what we can do to improve that. I, I would suggest, as we know more about what's happening with the fair share, we'll probably come back around the May revise and do basically another multi-year projection before we actually come to adopted budget. Because that would reflect what we know about the fair share, how we think it's going to actually affect the districts on a multi-year basis. And hopefully, we'll know whether we get, you know, more bad news, the same news, or any better news at May revise.
And one other thing, that if we do take the one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per ADA, it's way less than the one-point-five we've projected. So this really would be the worst-case and, well, maybe the medium-case scenario. There could always be worse.
Well, depending on the May revise and next year's budget.
Exactly.
And all the other variables that are unknown yet, right?
If we had known this information two weeks ago.
Wouldn't have made any difference.
Okay, that's, we would have still cut six million.
You still would have cut six million because you can see you're barely making it in the second subsequent year. And usually, May revise trends worse in bad economic times. It trends better in good economic times. So I'm not holding my breath.
Public comment?
Oh. Well, I just, I had one quick question. On page thirty-one, I'm going to try to keep this really quick, but we, we're anticipating five-point-four million, I'm sorry, that was, that was the cut of, on the fair share side for eleven, twelve. Is that right? The district loses five-point-four million in revenue in eleven, twelve, if you are still contemplating the five-point-eight percent fair share. Do we have any reason to know whether, or think that's a constant figure, that five-point-eight for fair share?
Well, I, I think what's going to happen is here's the variables we don't know. We don't have the hundred-and-ninety-dollar hit in here anywhere because we had no idea how it was going to manifest itself. And we think that basically the five-point-four million is a good figure, but it might be pushed out another year. So I think what Meg's saying is we took a pretty worst-case in the second subsequent year, we think it's worst-case. So, but, um.
But maybe, I'm always the opt, maybe property taxes would possibly bump up a little bit.
Well, and that's the other thing. We used, we used, we talked to the county auditor controller and countywide, they're going with a negative one. And then we looked at the elementary in the second, and we went with less than one at point-five. And that's, we left that flat, I believe. Did we not? One percent in the next, in eleven, twelve. So pretty conservative. So it's a pretty conservative multi-year projection.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I would move to go ahead.
We have two public comments, I think.
We have two public comments. Kate Smith, followed by Carolyn Renard.
President, heron, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education. Money is not the problem. Management is. What we need is a new school paradigm where we have child-centered, teacher-directed, parent-involved schools. We do not need administrators to administrate. We need teachers to teach our children. And we need the parents to help. We're willing to do that. But the story broke yesterday. There is school corruption. It's an American Holocaust. We are betraying our children and the public trust. There is an education politico-industrial complex. And Santa Barbara, with Bill Saroni and his cronies, and DA Tom Sneddon's truancy program, which has morphed into the school-to-prison pipeline, it is the lead case in a national investigation into an American Holocaust. Back in the sixties, there were schools for white children, and there were, there was nothing for black children, not even books. So there was desegregation, and billions of dollars were pumped into schools. They built schools. And they hired administrators. And we have come back round to a segregated educational system where the blacks and Hispanics, the low socioeconomic sector of our society, are pushed into the Department of Justice. They are incarcerated instead of educated because they make more money. They collect twice the ADA for their attendance in the jail school. And then the DA, the police, the probation, they make billions of dollars off of the Department of Justice system.
Thirty seconds.
The juvenile injustice system. So there's no change in our school model. There's still a teacher at the blackboard and rows of, of students at desks. You are paying consultants to stonewall the complaints and the breakdown of the old school model. You have seven million dollars in encroachment. If you would just give the students the services of special education, you wouldn't have to pay from the general fund fifteen-hundred dollars a day for a consultant. Do you understand how outrageous this is?
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Carolyn Renard.
I also don't understand why a consultant needs to be hired at twelve-hundred a day to, to conduct investigations on personnel complaints for special education when we have a personnel department that's supposed to be doing that. Why can't your personnel department investigate personnel complaints and deal with them? I just don't understand why thousands of dollars have to be spent on hiring consultants. Also, regarding the special education encroachment, as, as you know, the, when the district doesn't give many special ed students the services they're supposed to have, and then when parents that can afford an attorney do sue and the district loses, then the district has to pay many, many more dollars in order to try to make the child whole. Oftentimes, the child can't really be made whole because their whole future is destroyed by then. You only have one chance to get an education, really. And if you don't get it, you can't, no matter how much money you spend, it's very difficult to go back and fix it because the kid's self-esteem is destroyed. Well, anyway, the district often ends up having to spend money when they lose these lawsuits. Well, all that money goes into special education encroachment. So, so it makes it look like special education is encroaching on the general fund, but it's actually the district acting illegally, having to pay the price, and then claiming that it's special education that's encroaching on the general fund. You know, it's a really duplicitous way of doing things. I'd also like to say that there's other legal fees that are extremely inappropriate that go into this supposed encroachment. I filed a complaint about the special education assessments, the appalling assessments that are being done in this district that make it look like kids who need services don't need them and that they don't have disabilities when they do. And I was, got a letter from this, this district and board's attorney, Craig Price of the law firm Griffith and Thornburg, saying that he was handling the complaint. And then I, and he said, and then I got, was contacted by Carol Miller, a consultant who the district had used previously to help out special education, and people felt that she did a pretty good job. I didn't have a problem with Carol Miller doing the investigation, except Craig Price was in an unethical conflict of interest.
Thirty seconds.
He, he hired Carol Miller. And he can't conduct an investigation on his own client. He can't represent both the district and the board at the same time when they're in a conflict of interest. He can't even give advice to this board or the district about these things because he is in an unethical conflict of interest. I hate to think of how many dol, thousands of dollars in attorney's fees you've paid him for the letters he's written to me in which he tries to claim and avoid the fact that he's not in a conflict of interest. And he's just written me another letter that probably cost you hundreds of dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Renard.
Trying to obfuscate the whole thing.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
It's disgusting.
That concludes public comment.
And that's Griffith and Thornburg that that attorney is, the law firm that you've hired.
Thank you.
Griffith and Thornburg.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Dr. Well.
I simply wanted to say that, that the use of the term Holocaust in the context in which it was just used really diminishes the moral importance and weight of one of history's most horrendous periods, and I think is wholly inappropriate.
Thank you. Mrs. Deacon?
Okay. I will go back to my motion. I would like to go ahead and move to approve the positive certification of the second interim financial report.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously?
Can I thank everyone for their hard work, too?
Yes. E-two, approval of reduction in particular kinds of services, adoption of resolution number oh-nine slash ten dash thirty-six.
We have Ann Peake, our personnel analyst, with us tonight.
Good evening. I'm here this evening, as you can see from the information we gave you, in regard to more reductions in force in our Child Development Department. Based on the information that we have here, and due to their budget situation, we'll be looking at cutting ten-point-two-two FTEs for the Child Development Department.
Out of how many?
Oh, I don't have their total FTEs. It was, it was actually the Child Development Department itself put together the proposal of where they thought cuts could be made in order to get their monies back in the black.
So this, this has come from that?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, they had a, put a plan together that basically entailed both certificated and classified reductions, and it was pretty severe. And so I know it'd be difficult to negotiate mostly reductions in hours, is what they proposed with our classified employees. And so they're trying to do, they're trying to get their head above water. I think their original proposal was basically to have enough of an ending balance to pay all the money back they owed the unrestricted general fund. But it was just so severe, I said, I said, Ann, maybe they can go forward with their certificated, but even this is going to be severe.
Part of this reflects sending the head teachers back to the classrooms. They had four head teachers that were out, first full-time release, then it was point-five. And so they were, they were in a leadership capacity in a way by assisting the sites. So that's reflected in here as well.
But it also kind of ties into my comments during the interim report that I think we need an evaluation of this program. And I'm going to keep harping on that point because. first off, we... We can't allow, you know, the child development fund to continue to encroach... And I know that's not a popular word, but (laugh) encroach on the unrestricted general fund and, uh, you know, $263,000 in one year. Even though I know they've made significant progress in reducing those expenses, I... I think there's underlying systemic issues that really need to be looked at.
Public comment?
Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Board. Lane Wheeler, SBTA, and I'd like to thank you for your support at last week's march. You guys really stood up, and I'm very proud of you for doing that. Thank you. Santa Barbara Teacher Association would like to make a claim to you that this is a drastic cut in child development program. Program that serves our most underrepresented populations and a program that... That is a very necessary and needed program out there. At last week's budget, you had an opportunity to cut one of the two administrators in this program, coordinator position, and you chose not to do so. Before you move forward on any cuts to additional certificated staff, and I'm going to guess there's probably some classified staff that may be affected negatively also, I'd like you to look again at that and see if that, in fact, that cut is now in... In order and should be made. We would encourage you to make cuts as far from the classroom. There were something on the order of 49 teachers, more or less, in that program. With a reduction of 10, you're talking about two coordinator positions for 39 people. That's not even represented at some of our junior high schools with a principal and a vice principal. So we'd really like to see you examine that very closely before you make any recommendation to move forward with these cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Do you have a response to that by chance? Did... What did we do with... Did we not?
The board did not take any action on that. I... I think... I mean, there's a couple of issues. Obviously, it was a proposal we put forward. I think the other issue is that... I think, notwithstanding that it was staff's recommendation, I think there's a feeling that we need to look at the whole thing comprehensively, and the ultimate outcome might end up being that recommendation or something even more severe. And I'm talking with respect to the administrative reductions. But... So we're kind of caught between them having to take some action to balance their books versus what I think will probably take, you know, the better part of six months to do, you know, to get everybody lined up, to come in and do the evaluation. And I have a recommendation about how that evaluation should be paid for. Is that shown, Meg, in the line item in the child development where they make the repayment to us?
Yes, it is. It's in the budget.
So... They pay $132,000 a year, both this year and next year, to pay us back. And I would propose that whatever the cost of an outside firm come out of that. So, you know, they're essentially paying us for the study to be provided out of the amount of money that I... They would pay us back. I mean, the other option is to pile on and make it even greater, but, you know... So I... I think we're in a difficult place where, as far as timing, they need to act and act now to basically balance and eliminate the operating deficit. But also, I think everybody sees the need for some kind of overarching, comprehensive assessment, both fiscal and programmatically.
Mr. Herron, we agreed to bring you back a restructuring plan, and what you're hearing is that we'd like more analysis on that before we bring it back to you. Since we're not agendized for that discussion, we'd like to just put that on a further agenda and bring it to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Well, I guess my problem with that, and I appreciate that it's going to take a fair amount of time to do that right, um, but I don't know... I mean, in the meantime, we're talking about, um, 10.22 positions, and I... I feel like even this spring, we need to be able to look at, uh, suspending a... An administrative position if it means... We really need to look at both of those things at the same time rather than just being it... Having it come to us as one thing, which last time was just administrators. And I didn't have the understanding that it would take six months to have that kind of review.
I'm just guessing, so...
And so I guess my question is, if it came down to us deciding, uh, for the adopted budget in June, that we wanted to reduce an administrative position in child development to try to offset some of the other cuts, um, for direct, you know, teacher interactions with preschool children, um...
I think the issue we're running up against is none of them are noticed.
Exactly.
Because the board never took action.
So was there a March 1st deadline for that?
March 15th.
March 15th. The ed code requires a March 15th deadline for certificated management, which both of them are, as well as for certificated classroom teachers. Or certificated staff.
Was that the one below the line that if we took action on it, it wouldn't have affected the $6 million?
Yeah. It would not affect the $6 million in terms of the tally, but it does affect it from a cost avoidance perspective because, you know, as I think, you know...
Well, it affects the child development budget.
Yeah. It affects the child development budget, which is running an operating deficit.
But when you say we didn't take action, did we ta... Not take action by default? We just didn't talk about it and carry it further after...
I think that's what occurred.
We got to $6 million and we were elated and...
I'm not sure anybody was elated on that night.
No, the board... The board deferred that, and...
Did we?
We... We did defer it, and it was my understanding we deferred it because we wanted to come back and have a holistic discussion about the whole child development piece. And so I guess I was a little surprised that now we're looking at teachers when we deferred administrators because we wanted to look at the whole piece. And I... I completely understand we're up against this deadline. Is it possible because we... Historically, we've noticed people and brought them back. Is it possible we can notice, do the review, and then bring teachers back?
We can, although we would... Well, the amount of time involved is critical here. It would still be our preference to notice the administrators and... And have that flexibility. But in order to do that, we would have to agendize it and ask for your approval on that before March 15.
Right. But we could move on the teacher piece tonight because it's agendized.
We could move on the teacher piece, yes.
And you're just thinking in terms of preserving your flexibility?
Frankly, I would like to preserve our flexibility for administrators, but I know that, um, my fellow board members don't want to have a special meeting. But we would have to do this before March 15th if we wanted to give them, you know, put them in the same situation where they're noticed, just the way the teachers are, and then at least have a few weeks or months to come to some conclusion about it as a... As a group.
Mrs. Cudero?
Well, I... I feel the same way, and I would be willing to have a special, limited meeting for this one particular item, um, because I know that it is time-sensitive. And I agree that I would... I would want to notice the administrators as well as the teachers. And that would give us the most flexibility in terms of discussing how we... How we ultimately restructure. So, I would be willing to meet with very... The one-item agenda.
So maybe we can talk about that in terms of upcoming agenda items at the end of this meeting?
Yes. And so are you gonna... Are we going to postpone this item? Or are you going to go ahead and move on this item and...
I think we can move on this item and then with the understanding that we're going to come back, uh, within the next, um, six days and, um... And talk about the administrators also. So with that, I will move to approve the reduction in particular kinds of services and adoption of resolution number 09, uh, 10-36.
I'll second that with the understanding that we're... That some of these may be rescinded.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. At this point, we are supposed to go to item E3. I'm sorry, not E3. Yep. F1. But I would like to move E3 up, uh, and take it... I'm... I've been told by Dr. White, it might be five minutes at the most. And...
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to bring you, um, the requested change in the single plan process. Last fall, we discussed moving the single plan process of board approvals from fall to spring. And, um, also to bring you a new template. The principals were surveyed in fall, and there was a decision to move to a different template. The template that was in your packet was developed by my office. The principals were given the template on January 26th, and then we met again on February 26th, and 10 principals went over the template, and this is what we're bringing to you as a template. It actually just takes the format of the required elements and turns it from portrait to landscape so that it, um, as you see from the bottom where it says "template," simplifies the format, reduces the redundancies that you've seen in the past, um, standardizes the pyramid of intervention just for the purposes of the plan. The schools will continue to use their unique, um, pyramids for, um, purposes of the interventions that they do. It delineates expenditures by tier one, tier two, and tier three levels of intervention, just as we have in the pyramid. And it gives you a uniform format of seeing who's in the school site council, the ELAC, which is the English Learner Advisory Committee, and the safety, um, teams. We'd like to also keep the plan under 10 pages. There's some research that says that a plan over seven pages is usually shelved. So the timeline we're looking at here is in April and May. My office would train school site councils and principals on the template. It's an Excel format. May, school site councils would do goal setting and budgeting. June, there would be a review by district staff of the single plan for student achievement. And we'd bring, um, the single plans to the board in August. And so I'm asking for your approval on the timeline and the format.
Discussion? Mrs. Carter?
I just have to say, uh, thank you. I think that this is a big step forward, and I know it's taken a lot of work. So I, uh, think that there might be public comment on this, but we can take public comment after there's a motion made. So I'm going to move to approve the process for single plan for student achievement and for... For all non-charter elementary and secondary schools and, uh, and the new template for the, uh, single plan.
Second.
Okay. Well, go ahead. I have some questions on the front.
Okay. Let's hear it for a public comment. Yeah. Let's hear public comment.
Uh, Lane Wheeler?
Back to back. I'm sorry to monopolize the mic. Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teacher Association. The Santa Barbara Teacher Association has worked closely with administration to provide site council trainings. The site council process is an important part of spending expenditure of categorical funds. What we found is that oftentimes, these pro... This program is led by the principal. It's not the process that should be occurring. The school site council trainings that we provided have empowered parents. We just recently did one in Spanish for the families up at McKinley, and the response was, "What a great training." We didn't know that we had this kind of responsibility as school site council members, and we didn't realize we had this kind of, uh, authority in... As part of a, uh, school site council team. While this looks good, this is the first, uh, notion that I've had of this, uh, proposal. I'd like to, uh, spend a little time looking at it. Once again, oftentimes, formats become the, uh, method that dictates how a for... A site council moves forward, and I wouldn't want to see this... This form become the, uh, the regiment for site council actions. They need to be able to think outside the box. Oftentimes, they've brought forward great ideas. They still may be able to do so under this format, but I... I haven't had time to really examine it to see if it... Does have that capacity. So, uh, once again, I'd like to have some opportunity for some public comment, for some school site councils to give you their response to how this might look and to, uh, think about this prior to a... A formal action on it. So I would just ask for a bit more time so that we can have some public comment, other than just myself and the Santa Barbara Teacher Association. We realize how important the school site councils are and how essential that training is. That's why we've brought forth, I think, six now, site council trainings to different sites, uh, everything from the, uh, LaCuesta to Santa Barbara High to, uh, McKinley and Monroe and a number of others. So, um, we feel that we'd like to be partners in this, and, uh, like I say, I just realized that this was on the agenda tonight. So, more time, please.
Mrs. Cudero?
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Well, I... I were, um... One of the things I liked about the single site plans is some of the narrative. And I'm afraid that this new template seems like it eliminates all the narrative. And on the... On the one hand, I like the... That it sort of clarifies the... The structure, but I would like to have some part of the narrative. One of the things that... That a lot of us used to appreciate was what was often sort of identified as an executive summary, um, in the single site plans. And I don't know necessarily that it needs to take that format, but there was something about that that really helped sort of, I don't know, focus the attention as we... As you go through all this data. So, I'd like to see that... Some... Some element of that returned.
Dr. Noel?
Yes. I don't fully understand... I mean, this pyramid has more space than it has stones. I don't understand what's... What more is it going to be? But I see that you mentioned that there are going to be several pyramids.
Correct. Actually, we'll use just the one format for purposes of the single plan. Some of the pyramids are... Some of the schools have pyramids for their counselors, for their, um, staff, for the administration, but this will be a pyramid that will delineate the expenditures in the plan and how they fall into, um, whether it's a core, uh, level-one intervention or an intensive intervention. So, it's to make it common among the schools. That was something that was...
Well, does an al... Does an algorithm go with the... The pyramid, uh, about... That asks them a series of questions that... So we can fill... Are they literally going to write on the pyramid?
They'll give you the interventions that they're using at each level. So it will be based on, um, whether the students need intensive intervention or just some strategic intervention. So it'll show you on the pyramid how they're expending their money, whether it's on extended time or one-to-one tutorials. It will illustrate that for you in a pyramid form and then be delineated on the next pages for the expenditure, the area from which it's being expended. And as you can see, there are four action plans, which are required elements in a single plan. One for English Language Arts, one for mathematics, and then you have the safe... Safe schools element, and for high school, they need to have dropout prevention.
So you have a matrix with a bunch of pyramids in the... In the cells of the matrix?
Correct.
Okay. It's getting... Getting big. And will it... For example, let's talk about, uh, in... Strategic intervention, which would be the... As I understand, the literature, the most common of the interventions.
Correct.
Most students. Will this ask them to describe... Well, first of all, will it... Will it give them guidelines on what the California Framework says strategic intervention is about?
Absolutely. You've seen their... You saw their pyramids a last time, and this time, they'll just be in a common format. So, the last time we presented the single plans, we did give you our pyramids of intervention. And for example, I can, uh... In English Language Arts, open court is our core program. Read 180 would be a strategic intervention, and then System 44 would be an intensive intervention for students that would be more than three years behind.
And for... And for students who are at grade level, uh, what do you... What does this call upon them to fill in for that?
Those would be their core materials that they use, and some of them are using, for example, novels and open court. Some of them would be using the mathematics in vision. And then for the strategic intervention for envision, there's extended time. And then if a student still needs additional help, they'd get, in the intensive intervention, maybe one-on-one tutorial.
Uh, we've tangled on this before, but about... We've tangled on this before, but let's talk about universal access because the framework calls for that to be implemented and the textbooks, the textbook publishers have been required to supply the material for that.
Correct.
Is that going to be, will they be asked how they're going to implement universal access strategies in the context of these plans?
It depends. Sometimes the universal access is provided with extended time. Sometimes it's provided by reducing class size. So you'd see that in the plan. You'd see what their strategies are for providing universal access to all students at a strategic level and at an intensive level.
If more discussion is needed, I'd suggest we not pass the motion and bring it back at another time, but there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor and I'd like to call for the question.
Do you want to make, one of us to make a motion? You want to make a motion?
I thought there was a motion.
There is, but I mean, to make a motion to call the question. It is actually a motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to call the question.
I'll second it.
My, I just have one other point I'd like to ask and that is, it's the principal that's responsible for writing the single plan and presenting the single plan. The site council votes how to spend the money, correct? But it is the principal that's responsible for writing and presenting the single plan?
It depends.
Can I cut, we have a call for a question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carried, three to two.
But you need to actually now...
Okay. Now we'll vote on the main motion. Okay. Now, discussion on the main motion?
I moved to table the motion, not table, but to postpone the motion until the next meeting, next regular meeting.
Do I hear a second? That does, for lack of a second?
I'd like to ask a question. Is it at all, would it be at all helpful, I don't know if this, if it would make any difference or not, to approve the timeline and review the template?
It's at the board's pleasure.
Because I don't have, in fact, I like, I wanted to say I appreciate the timeline. I think that's great. I would like to maybe look at the template a little bit more. So I don't, I don't know where that leaves us with the motion, but...
I'm willing to amend the motion so that's the timeline now and we have another discussion about the template. If my seconder is willing to second that.
I'm also going. And can I just take one second since we've been talking about this?
Of course.
The piece in here that I thought was really valuable and I think addresses some of my fellow board members' concerns is the conclusions from parents, teachers, and students. Because for me, that flavor that we got in the executive summary, this is now a place to definitely get input. And I really would like to see more input from students too, which we haven't seen as much from in the past. But I seconded the motion to approve the timeline and delay specifics on the template.
And I would, my understanding of this motion and the second is that we will have a chance to react to this and so that we don't get presented with a fait accompli. We have a chance for...
The motion is that the template will come back for discussion at the next meeting or at a future meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks for the five minutes.
Did you therefore also approve the timeline?
Yes.
Okay. As long as that's understood. Thank you.
Okay. F1. Presentation of draft charter for Caesar Chavez Charter School. Lee Fleming.
No break first?
No, the break doesn't come until nine o'clock.
A number of months ago, we agreed to meet with the Caesar Chavez community to discuss the draft of their charter prior to submission of the new charter petition. Lee Fleming is the president of the Governance Council for Caesar Chavez and she will lead this presentation.
We had a request for translation in the back for people who are late.
Oh, definitely.
Before I get started, actually, I know that you haven't had an opportunity to meet our new principal, so I just wanted to, she'll have a chance to answer questions as well a little bit later, but I want to at least have her stand up and introduce her to you, Juanita Hernandez. Yeah, we're super excited to have her. She's just been here for a week, but she's been amazing. So I'm really excited, actually, to be here, aside from the public speaking element, to really talk about this new school, this new charter. And so I thought it would probably be best for me to kind of go over some of our key changes to really highlight the difference between what we have kind of currently going and the direction of the new school. Maybe 10, 15 minutes and then we would just kind of go into the question session for board members. So I hope that format will work with everybody. Great. Okay, well, I wanted to start, before I kind of talk about the changes, I feel like it's really important to acknowledge the kind of journey that we've gone on as a community in a short but extremely intense period of time. So this is a great graphic. I don't know if you've seen it before. It was published in 2006 ASCD. And I really feel like this graphic kind of represents the journey of many schools and I think for us as well. So if you look at this lower left-hand quadrant here, these are schools that have low test scores and they don't know why. And if you look up here, these are schools that have high test scores, but they don't know why either. They're just lucky. So then you have schools that are down here that have low test scores, but they know why and they're beginning to implement changes to come up to leading, which are schools that have high test scores and they know why. I think high test scores can be translated into any form of student achievement, but I feel like this graphic really represents the journey that we've come on as a community. And I remember kind of a poignant moment with Susan Deacon, who expressed a concern that one of the letters that she got suggested that there was a sort of a mystery happening, that we didn't know why things were occurring and that was a concern. And I think as a community, we really felt that way. There was kind of a lot of mystery and we feel like we've definitely debunked a lot of that mystery and feel like we're making the right changes and have some, a real strategic plan in place to keep us here until we can get up here to be a leading two-way immersion school. So that's kind of the journey and I kind of want to talk about how we're going to get there. So if you think about aspects of change, there are sort of three pieces of that. How do we change culture? How do we change the way we think about our work and the way we do things? How do we change and support people in that change? And then what are the processes to make that change sustainable? And so we feel like we've addressed each of those areas in this new charter. First of all, culture change. Fidelity to a two-way immersion model as opposed to some other kind of internal guessing and work there, looking more at what is a two-way immersion model and how can we be faithful to that? Second, around sort of changing people, how do we set forth really clear expectations and hold people accountable, including all of us, all members of the community? And then what are the kind of two key processes that we'll be focusing on for sustainability? One of those, uniformity of instruction and peer modeling. So I'll kind of review those and I've got kind of page numbers correlated with each of those changes, which will help. So how do we change professional culture? We have an amazing group of teachers and they have gone through a very incredible, intense time, more than anybody else in our community certainly. And they've done, they did a lot of great work with Pat and I really feel like they've come into sort of a true professional learning community where their expectation is to talk about how we're going to improve on a regular basis and there's a specific focus around that. And the focus for that is fidelity to a two-way immersion model. When the charter was written 10 years ago, it was based on the best information that was available at the time. 10 years later, we have hundreds of charter, of two-way immersion schools throughout the country and they actually have specific practices that work in schools that were not written into our original charter. And so in order to make sure that we were being faithful to two-way immersion practices as we built this charter, we really worked with kind of leading experts. You know that we've worked with Catherine Lynn Holmleary and she actually looked at our charter and gave us some really quality feedback. We also had some great conversations with Rosa Molina, who's head of Two Way Cabe. She's from Santa Barbara, so the Santa Barbara area. And then Jody Winacek, who gave us some great advice as well. So those are three kind of West Coast two-way immersion experts. Additionally, we looked at other two-way immersion programs in schools in the state of California. If you look at page six, we actually have some specific practices from those schools. And when we looked at these schools, we not only looked at their charters, but we had conference calls with principals and with lead teachers to find out, especially schools that had struggled in the past. What did you do to fix your school? What did you do to become a leader? We also looked, when we were looking at the data for other two-way immersion schools, we really looked, we disaggregated the data like we had disaggregated our own earlier to look for the schools that really had mastered that Thomas and Collier curve that we see here. There were a lot of two-way immersion schools that kind of, the students came in at second grade around here and ended here. So those schools are doing great, but maybe they're a little bit more lucky. So we looked at schools that kind of had this, starting out maybe in second grade here, but ended up here, that they were outperforming native English speakers. So we consulted with schools that really followed the research model and we paid particular attention to their strategies. Again, sticking with the two-way immersion fidelity, our new budget will include professional memberships in Two Way Cabe and Cabe for our principal, for our teachers, and professional development days. Pat Morales made a great recommendation that we do a week-long teacher institute to really work through the professional development needs and kind of get started and create a plan for that next year. And so we're definitely going to incorporate that. And then we've got this kind of deep dive discussion of the 90-10 model versus 50-50. So I don't want to get into that too much right now and just kind of answer your questions about that, but I do want to highlight that 90-10 and 50-50 are two models, the key difference being time in the second language, which is Spanish. And so it doesn't actually change the methodology. If you look at strong 90-10s and strong 50-50s, they have similar, exact same practices. So what we've embedded into our charter are successful practices for either a 90-10 or 50-50. We know that that needs to be addressed and our community is really, it's really important for us to make sure that that is a decision that will be a thoughtful and careful decision for all stakeholders. So we'll answer questions you have about that in a little bit. Obviously, the benefits of two-way immersion schools, we talked about that a little bit before when we were here in October. A key, a key element that I think we really want to maintain, that we've kept in the past is, is the idea that two languages are equally valued on a school campus, that our students who speak Spanish as a first language have a higher level of self-concept. And Kathy Lynn Holmleary did a great, did a great research project about college-going attitudes among students who had been in a two-way immersion school. And of course, our focus is we really want to hit all of these areas, higher levels of language proficiency, achievement, and self-concept across the board. So we want to maintain that, the, you know, positive intergroup relations and expanding worldview and respect for customs. We feel like that's something we really have. And then we want to focus on how we're going to make sure that we're meeting those target language goals as we go along to really lead the way for an excellent two-way immersion school. We've talked about this before, but we just want to keep revisiting it, that regardless of the model, 90-10 or 50-50, there is a steady curve that has to occur here so that our students can, that they will come close to average performance of native English speakers. But somewhere in the middle school grades, six through eight, they begin to outperform average native English speakers, both for our Spanish speakers and our English speakers. And we also, of course, want to see our native English speakers outperform native Spanish-speaking peers as well, so that we can see an advantage for both sets of populations. So the key piece of the two-way immersion is that if you look at this, of course, Thomas and Collier study, the only two programs that really could get high achievement levels over time were two-way or one-way bilingual education programs. And so we're seeing this. We see this huge achievement gap in our schools and we know that it's really important to provide this opportunity for our students, if implemented with fidelity. And that's the key, that it has to be implemented with fidelity and that's a major change of paradigm for us culturally. In terms of supporting our people, well, we have to obviously provide really clear expectations and accountability. And so if you look at our previous charter, it was very difficult for us to look internally and assess ourselves, again, based on information that was available at that time. So what we've done is we've provided very specific goals and assessments. We've defined specific practices for our teachers and we can actually use that charter and go into a classroom and determine whether or not this is, this school is being implemented with fidelity based on the charter. And that's something that was very challenging for us to do before. So that accountability piece is huge and it's sustainable because it's written into our charter. We've also, we know that our governance really needed some work and we're really working on that. We've, a lot of great things have happened for us as a community. So one of the things that we're focusing on, we have a workshop this Saturday from nine to one with our attorney and we've done some, had some kind of informal Brown Act discussion to get better immediately, but this is our kind of more intense Brown Act training. And additionally, she's going to lead a discussion for us around how we can assess what we're doing and how we can know for being successful and how we can hold ourselves accountable through making bylaws that have very specific roles for each of our members of our governing board and we have put that into the charter as well. There's some other pieces here, the administration, the principal evaluation tool, we have a school success tool, and all of these pieces will help support everybody and set really clear expectations. And that's how you get accountability is by setting clear expectations and then evaluating people on those things. And then lastly, what are we going to do to make sure that that's sustainable? What are the things we do on a daily, weekly, yearly basis to make sure that we're achieving success? Well, one really key piece as a process is uniformity of instruction. I think we have had some really great teachers doing some really great things, but what we really want to do for our new school is a clear K through six articulation. What is the stair step from kinder to first to second to third? And if any research you see around schools that work, schools that are successful, a lot of it has to do with this professional piece. How do we know that we're really bridging the gap from kinder to second grade if we're the first grade teachers? And so we have to build a professional learning community around that. And we hired a principal who has 16 years of expertise in building professional learning communities and turning around schools. We're very excited to have her be the leader in that area. So there are some specific pieces in the charter to help us with that. We have specific practices for each subject area, so we can, again, look at that charter, walk into a classroom and see if there's uniformity of instructional practices. We're providing support in our budget for tools for the teachers to be able to do those things. And we have some other qualitative tools to maintain the cultural values that we really feel like we've established as a school. And of course, frequent assessment for each grade level and then as a school. Lastly, and, not lastly, there's a lot more than that, but these are kind of our four key changes. A really important piece that we've learned in this process is that our charter dictated, based on some other examples that were out there at the time, that students would start in their own first language. Our Spanish-speaking students started in their first language and our English-speaking students started in their own first language and they didn't come together during language development time until third grade. Well, that has to change and that will change and it's built into our new charter. Students learn best with strong models of fluency during language development time specifically. And so our teachers will need to be supported in differentiation of instruction during language arts time. And again, we've brought in a principal who has expertise in that area, specifically with language learners, and so she'll be able to really provide them with the direction that they need. Again, there are some other practices. It specifically mentions heterogeneous grouping three times in the charter. It also talks about the ability to do some homogeneous differentiation of instruction through pulling out two or three students, you know, with a teacher. And again, the teachers will be supported in that. And then obviously, when students have a fluent speaker in their reading group, it makes a big difference for both Spanish speakers and English speakers and it gets to that inner social relation. We've been doing that for half the day in other subject areas, but we haven't been doing that during language arts time and that will be a key change. And we're really excited about that and we see that as definitely a linchpin for changing our language arts instruction. So we kind, we feel that the combination of changing our cultural expectation by practicing fidelity to outstanding two-way immersion programs, by supporting our people through clear expectations and accountability, and changing key processes like articulation of instruction and providing heterogeneous grouping, we feel that these three things together are putting together a phenomenal school to lead the way for not only our school, but for the Santa Barbara School District. So those are the key changes. And I have, we have some kind of key members of our community who will be answering some questions you might have. So if I could just ask those people to make their way kind of up here so that when we have a question, I can refer to you. Or you can stay where you are. Oh, every, well, I see Lisa back there, so I just wanted to make sure that Lisa, you can shout from the back if you have a... So I think we're ready for your questions.
Mrs. Parker?
I have comments and questions for you in a moment. My first question is actually going to be for Dr. Sarvis and that is, yesterday... And that is, yesterday, the California Department of Education came out with its list of the persistently low-achieving schools in the state. We do have the one school that's on the list, which is Cesar Chavez Charter School. How is that going to play in? Do you have any idea how this is going to play into a new charter coming out of the school?
Well, the, that does complicate this because, uh, originally, uh, the board approval was all that was required for a new charter. The state has implemented new legislation and the state is demanding a turnaround for any school, uh, turnaround, excuse me, an implementation, one of any four implementations, for any school that's on the list of persistently low-achieving schools. And Cesar Chavez is on that list. Now, we had been talking to the state in advance because we were anticipating going to race for the top, to the top money and, and, uh, regardless of whether California gets that money or not, this law is still in effect. I mean, we're, we're all still beholden to this law. So there may be a level of state scrutiny overlaying our process. That's brand new. Uh, that, that didn't occur until I got the call last Thursday night from the CDE saying that we had a school on that list. And I'm sure the school is researching that. Uh, we're researching that. We have attorneys researching that. Uh, we're working with the state directly. There's a state board meeting on Thursday and frankly, the, the state is, is making up the rules on the run on this, uh, because they're determined to do something. The, the information originally was that if it's a charter school that's on that list, the charter school would simply be closed. There would be no other implementation allowed, whether it's a turnaround or a restart or, uh, whatever the, the different formats were. I don't know how that stands right now. And we will find out and we'll work with Lee on it. And any information we get, we'll get to you. Any information you get, you need to get to us. We'll, we will sit on, on the, uh, the teleconferences, um, and the webinars on this as it's unfolding. Frankly, I don't have a clear answer for you tonight.
Mrs. Parker?
All right. I will try to be brief because I know there's going to be lots of questions and comments. And, um, I'm not going to go into too many specifics as I go along. Um, anything that I have that's really detailed, I will email to Dr. Sarvis so that he can get that to you. Um, I want to start off by really complimenting the Governance Council because in November, when this board looked at, um, the charter and the charter renewal, uh, we were not willing to give you firm direction on which way to go. And in doing that, knowing that this persistently low-achieving school thing was out there, uh, we were really putting you at risk if you had decided to go for renewal. And it was, it was your board that had to make that difficult decision. And I know it was hard and I'm sure you had lots of community discussion about it. And, um, ultimately, you decided that, in fact, Cesar Chavez, the existing Cesar Chavez School will close and a new charter is going to come forward. And if you had not voted that way, you would be looking full closure in the face with no possibility of being open next year. And, um, so I really have to give kudos because I know that that was hard because we couldn't do it. [laughing] And, um, I really appreciate that because I think it was the best thing for your students ultimately. Um, so I really want to give you, uh, kudos for that. Um, and looking through your charter, I see lots of, uh, lots more specifics. Uh, I'm, I'm really, um, I'm really pleased with the direction that it's going in. Um, is it significantly different from the old school? Probably not, but I don't know how you could be significantly different because ultimately it's the same staff, same students, and the same philosophy. And so that's where I'm worried about what the state comes down on a bit because I think that this is a, a new charter that's much better, but is it significantly different? I don't know what they're going to say. So my, um, quick areas that I have questions on, or maybe just comments on, and you can think about it, um, are in the, um, measurable student outcomes section. There is a, um, when it's talking about the CSTs in particular, it's referring-
Page number?
Sorry. Um, let's go to, well, in general, that section starts on page twenty-seven. Um, and I was looking at a couple of things there. One is that there's, there seems to be less, um, less checking of Spanish, uh, development for native English speakers. Um, and so I just had questions about that. Um, also, when it's looking for the assessment goals for specific English learner assessment goals, um, you know, that sixth graders are, it refers to seventy-five percent of students being basic or above. Um, currently, our, our district is at eighty percent of English learners at basic or above by sixth grade. And so I'd really like to see proficiency in there instead of basic. But I don't know, uh, if you've talked about that. The, for the, uh, number of students currently, the charter's, uh, can go up to three hundred and there's no reference to that, um, that I could find, uh, for the new charter. Three hundred students. Um, there's no reference to a member of the district, uh, some representative from the different district being on the Governance Council.
Yeah, there's, there's a non-voting member on there.
Um, I'll, I'll, and I'll check on that. And, you know, the, the, um, the EDCO doesn't reference whether it can be a voting or non-voting member. So I'm, I'm just, I'm curious to find out more about that.
Mrs. Parker, on page seven, under enrollment, it says it starts with a population of two-twenty students. Maybe there it should, with a goal, with a maximum of three hundred.
Of up to three hundred. That's, that's where I would, I would put that. Then in, uh, the dispute resolution section, um, essentially, that goes into way more detail than it does for other charter schools. And probably the best thing is for it to simply mimic the Peabody dispute resolution, um, section. Um, I don't know if anybody's read that recently, but I have. And, uh, and let's see.
And we can provide, we can provide more information on that as well.
Right. And that's it for me on the, the concerns for the current charter, but I, uh, or the new charter. And I'm going to keep referring to it as a new charter because, um, it, it will be a new charter. Um, the board does have to take action to close, uh, the existing Cesar Chavez School. So one of my questions is, what's the timeline for doing that? Um, and then with that, your existing Governance Council will be dissolved. So, um, I guess I'd also like to hear about the plans for training the new Governance Council because it's great that the current one is getting it, but then you'll, you'll have a new one that may or may not include old members. Um, what else? And then this is just the draft of the charter. We need to look at the budget, the bylaws, and the, uh, whatever MOU comes up. I did look at the state template for MOUs and, yeah, and I think that that might be a good fit for what's going on. Uh, you know, if this, the state has a template for when they have a charter school come to them. And, um, it's pretty clear-cut and it seemed like it might be, uh, a good one for us to, to work off of for the one with Cesar Chavez. And finally, I just want to thank Pat Morales. Um, she raved about the teachers at Cesar Chavez and, um, her report and then, um, Mrs. Deacon and I coming to visit, um, it, it really helped us. I think Mrs. Deacon would agree with me, seeing how, uh, supportive, um, she was of the school and how much she believed in the teachers' passion and their desire to get training and to, to move forward and make progress. Um, it was really, um, she was really inspired by her whole, uh, experience there. So that was, that was very helpful. And I was really glad that she was able to sort of serve as a liaison and give us a report on that. So that's it for me.
Next, Mrs. Deacon?
Um, well, thank you for the, the segue because I did very much enjoy my visit and, and speaking with, um, Pat Morales. And I'm hopeful that she'll have a chance to speak with Ms. Hernandez and do a kind of a debriefing, a handoff there because I think that, that will be really valuable. A couple of things. In the assurances portion of the charter on page four, you talk about the goal of admitting fifty percent native English speakers and fifty percent native Spanish speakers. And that number has shown up a lot in the research that we've been provided and have been reading a lot about as well. And I have drawn the conclusion, and, and maybe you can illuminate and, and expand on this, that the closer you are to that percentage, probably the better off you're going to be for kids in, in each side of that component. And so you, you have a recruitment plan in here. Um, I guess I'd like to know how, how long you, you think you might take to get there? What's the likelihood of getting there? And just your thoughts on that because I, that's something that, um, I don't know exactly the percentage where you are right now with native English speakers, but it seems to me that, reading the literature, that, that chance to be exposed to both languages is, by peers, is really, really important. And so, um, that's a little bit of a concern for me, that, that proportion isn't close to where you ultimately want to be. So maybe you could address that.
We'll just kind of be like your-
No, no, let's go, no, let's go to the microphone.
Well, maybe, so, Michael, maybe and Beth both. Um, so I, I do want to just, there's, there were a couple of things I just wrote down, so I'll address those. And, um, so first of all, the chart that we included about English learner assessment goals, that came from Kathy Lynn Holmleary about research across the board in two-way immersion schools. I think that's, that's when we sent her our information about our assessments, she edited it, made these recommendations based on research. And so that's why we included this particular piece. Um, I really, uh, liked the comment about making sure that we have the mirrored in Spanish. Um, so, thank you. And then, um, Juanita's already had a chance to debrief with Pat, so we did the handoff. So just, um, and then, um, Michael, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the, um, about the population of our students?
Sure, sure. Um, just going back to the, um, comment about Spanish assessment, I agree that that's a great point, something that we didn't work in as aggressively as we, as we could and should have. Um, I think that, you know, Pat made an interesting point when she came in and first started working with us, that evaluation, if I recall correctly, serves, uh, you know, ma, different purposes, but two of the ones that we're looking at most closely are, uh, as an external, um, indicator and then as an internal, uh, informing instruction, uh, tool. And not all of the ones that are, are multipurpose, but as much as we can, we want to, you know, build, uh, you know, really use the ones that we can use in, in both ways. And so there's been a move to try and use more, uh, popular, district-approved and, you know, well-recognized, uh, tools so that we can simultaneously be informing instruction and, uh, representing to the outside. I think that with Spanish, there's a, there's definitely less tools, uh, out there and, and definitely far fewer traditionally required as far as external measures go, but we, we want to make sure that we're rigorous with the internal processes. So that was just my thoughts on that. About the, um, our school's population right now, um, I believe sixty-nine percent is our school-wide, uh, English language learner number, uh, sixty-eight, okay? Uh, and, um, but this year, our kindergarten is, uh, approximately fifty-fifty. Um, and, um, with, uh, I, I, I agree that, you know, the, the research that I've read has shown that the, um, largest percentage that two-way immersion programs can work with successfully are up to two-thirds, um, uh, approximately, um, uh, of either, um, English, native English speakers or native Spanish speakers. And we're right at that and that, that better results are seen as we move toward fifty-fifty. So I think that that's definitely some, a discussion that we've had many times and, and I feel comfortable representing that the, that all of the, the stakeholders are interested in, 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 in pursuing recruitment and, uh, that, that supports the, uh, a, you know, an equal, um, blend of language models because this is what's shown best for our students.
Yeah, and just to kind of clarify, the sixty-eight percent, um, English learner population is just our tested population. So that, that was our second through sixth grade last year. So we actually have a smaller overall percentage, um, this year. And, um, in terms of balance, um, the research is, you know, two, two-thirds, no more than two-thirds, but there doesn't seem to be, uh, if you look at the schools in the state that are exactly fifty-fifty percent, you know, it, it kind of depended on their, on their, on their school model. If they were a fifty-fifty Spanish and English model school, they tended to have a more balanced English and Spanish, um, speaking population, whereas the ninety percent, the ninety-ten models, uh, tended to have a larger, um, English learning population. And so that's certainly something that's part of the, the debate and the dialogue about that, the model itself.
Mrs. Deacon?
Since we're talking percentages, I was also interested in the models and the difference between the two. And you haven't selected one model over the other. And I'm wondering if, um, if the district wants some assurance of one direction versus the other, if, if, you know, if the board is willing just to say whatever you decide. Can you give me a sense of, are the teacher, where are the teachers, the staff on this? I mean, is, is there unanimity on, on direction?
Would you like to answer that? Put you on the spot after a week?
To the best of my knowledge at this point, I've been there seven days. I think that, um, overall, the staff is willing to do whatever it takes. The staff is most familiar with fifty-fifty model. And, um, we're, in talking to some of the staff, what we really, really want to do is take the time to, to study and make the best decision for the students.
Not to, not to say that that decision isn't in process in terms of where the teachers are right now. When we talk to both Rosa Molina and Kathy Lynn Holmleary, we've actually asked the question in the past, you know, why do we do fifty-fifty if our populations are, I have asked it, I know other, uh, parents have asked it. Um, and so when, in, in speaking with, um, both Kathy and Rosa, they asked, they just said, "Do you have the capacity? Do you have staffing to be able to do a ninety-ten?" Because it does require teachers who can teach at a very high level proficiency in Spanish. And so, uh, they asked me the question and I said, "Well, I, I, I think so. They're great, but I don't have the expertise in that area." And, um, so Juanita does need some time to, to, we don't want to implement a ninety-ten model and then struggle, uh, in that area when we know that we do have the capacity to do fifty-fifty. Um, and so that's part of the decision, but we couldn't, as a governing board, just sort of randomly make a decision about the capacity of our staff without having administrator do an official evaluation. And we did ask Pat to do an official evaluation and she did give our teachers a flying colors pass across the board. So that was wonderful for our staff and wonderful to be assured that they are, you know, amazing people. Um, but it didn't really give us any further direction about that particular piece. So just to be honest about where we are with that, um, that's kind of a, a linchpin for whether or not we do that. And, and we know that the practices in a fifty-fifty and ninety-ten are, are both embedded into the charter. So that's why. I hope that answers the question a little bit more fully.
Mrs. Cordell?
Well, first of all, I, having attended a number of the Governance Council meetings, I know how much work and time, lots and lots of time, um, and effort has gone into preparing this, uh, new charter. So I really want to commend you on, um, putting some, uh, sort of stumblings at the beginning aside and really wholeheartedly embracing the move to a new charter and making it the best you could, you possibly could. I know how much research you've done. I know I've listened to the reports and, and heard, um, all the, the discussions you've had with various experts contacting the state, et cetera. So I, I really think that, I don't know of a group that's put more effort into writing a charter than, than this group has. So I just, I really truly want to commend you on that. Um, and some of the, the issues that I was going to ask about have, have been raised already. I, yeah, I think it is important to be aware of the difference between ninety, the ninety-ten model and the fifty-fifty model. And I know you had had some conversation about having a, a school-wide meeting with Rosa Molina, um, to do a little bit of, not, not, not training, but just explanation of what re, what the two different models really entail. Has, has that been set up yet or is that going forward or? And can board members attend?
Yeah, um, we, I, we've had several meetings where we've spoken about the, um, the, the question and, um, and one of them, Rosa Molina was, was ready to go on with us, but we weren't, it's just the timing didn't work out. So, um, we've been going back and forth by email. We're trying to set something up. Um, it's not, we don't have a definite date that, yet though. Um, we'd, um, but it, it's definitely something that everyone has expressed interest in. But it's definitely something that everyone has expressed interest in, having an expert who really just solidly understands all of the nuances and can advise us in a way that we can definitely, you know, trust that this person knows what all the implications are. So, and are you invited? I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess a question I might ask the board is, you've read about it and studied about it, some of you know presumably more than others about 90/10 versus 50/50. And I guess I'd like kind of a weigh-in from you about, you know, what we have currently written into our charter is the timeframe. If you look at the language versus, English versus Spanish, it's written in, it says at least 50% Spanish. And so we've written that in. And so I think the question was raised a little bit, you know, by Susan, if that's something that has to be embedded. And it isn't because of delay of decision, but there is some question about if we did decide to go with a 90/10, it wouldn't come to its full fruition for four years. We would roll out one grade at a time, kinder, and then first, and then second. So I guess it would take three years or four to get to that. And there are, there is a pretty big variety of schools that do like a 90/10, 80/20, 70/30 versus 90/10, 74, or what if that's not 70/40? I don't know what that is, but that would be cool. Anyway, so just sort of varieties of how they roll it out, or sometimes they'll delay 50/50. So in terms of the nuances of that model, even though people say 90/10 or 50/50 in their, in their charter or in their school plan, it isn't really cut and dry like that. So we could put in 50/50 that would apply to fourth through sixth grades, or a 90/10 that would apply to kinder but not the rest of the school. And so I guess my question was, are you comfortable with the at least 50% in Spanish? Or is that something that you feel like it has to be really cleanly articulated? So I guess I'd like to kind of ask you that question.
Well, I was comfortable, I mean, I'm comfortable with that language, but I think sort of, I feel like I'm sort of in line with the teachers. I'd really like to know the subtle nuances of the differences, because I feel like I have, I have my own opinion about what I think is sort of pedagogically sound, et cetera. But then I also know that there are some subtleties in language acquisition at those particular ages that I don't have expertise in, and that I would like to understand a little bit better in terms of which model actually serves the language acquisition needs of the students, you know, better. But given that, given that that's where I am, I feel comfortable with the language as it is and letting the school make, ultimately make that decision. I don't know if other board members wanted to address that, but I had one question, so I'd like to come back to my question, or if other people wanted to.
Well, I'll just jump in on that, which is, you know, I've seen the same research that you have in swimming, and it seems clear that the most important thing is fidelity of implementation and excellent teaching, not necessarily whether it's 50/50 or 90/10. And so I agree in the sense that, I mean, one way or another, it's going to be your decision whether it's 90/10 or 50/50. And I think that you should take the time, without necessarily having to have it in the charter, to make sure that that is what's best for your community.
At this stage, if there was one of those two that this group thought was make or break, I think it's worth talking about. But I don't get the feeling that that's, at this point, it's your choice. We're happy to weigh in and, as you go through it. But either way, at this point, it's not a deal breaker.
Well, I'd agree. And since I raised it, I guess my real concern is that we're asking you to do so much right now, and there are so many other things that are going on, that to switch that model puts an extra burden on the teachers. And that's really, was the genesis of my concern. So I don't, I'm not qualified to say one model's better than the other or to tell you what to do, but just common sense kind of dictates, you know, go slow because you don't want to overwhelm your teachers. And I did happen to talk to the principal at the Chula Vista Dull immersion school, and I asked him, and he goes, he was adamant about 50/50, you know? So some people just have their own perspectives, and I guess ultimately you have to decide. But, thanks.
You have another question, Mrs. Godell?
Yes, and I hesitate to bring this up because I fear that it's going to sound like a criticism, and I don't want it to. But I know, because I know you had a lot of discussion about this. I just would like to, I guess, share my opinion on this item. And that is, I know you had a lot of discussion on how to configure the governance board. And I know that there was discussion about whether it should specifically state that one of the parents or that a member of the governance board would be either fully bilingual or even predominantly Spanish-speaking. And, you know, and I know that you chose not to have that language in the charter, and instead opted for the language to reflect the diversity of the school. And I just would like to put it out for your consideration, whatever it's worth, that, you know, I think, given, especially what you were talking about, that students would really understand and value both languages, that it would be a nice reflection of the value of both languages to have that embedded in the charter itself, as something that the charter values enough to say, we will, we want this no matter what this is, we want this badly enough that it's part of our charter. And so, for whatever it's worth, for your consideration, you know, that was just one area that I, you know, would, would maybe like to see revised a little, but I understand it's your decision, and you guys can just think about that.
Dr. Noel?
I don't have a lot to say, because I don't feel that I have the whole proposal in front of me. Some of the key factors like this discussion we're just, we're just, we're now having, I want, I don't think it's our job to make that decision, it's your job to make that decision. So I'll wait for that. In general, I don't see what I would call a real qualitative difference between this and the old school. And in my opinion, the old school was a failure. And so I'm very much troubled by that. But again, when you're finished with this, maybe it will show more difference. As it stands now, I don't see it. And let me just see, I have a couple more notes here. Well, I guess, oh, I wanted to ask, could we get a copy, hard copy of the presentation you put on the, on the, on the board? In general, also, I don't see provisions for oversight, benchmarks, performance, steps along the way that would let the board know exactly what's going on and have some standards. And I think I've said it before, I think this charter needs a drop-dead clause, that if the school continues to fail, we're not going to, we're not going to wait five years. That that would not be just and fair to the students. And I don't see that dealt with at all. I know, I noticed there's talk in there about a performance audit, but it basically is a performance audit that is conducted directly under the principal, hiring a consultant. I think any performance audit ought to be, audit ought to be totally independent, with this board having some choice over who performs it.
So you're asking for us to embed, or what you might like to see as a recommended change would be oversight from the district and over the charter?
Well, it's up to you, but I mean, generally speaking, self-evaluation doesn't work. And generally speaking, a school that has a record of failure, in my opinion, gets, and I voted for and argued for your second chance, but not a blank check. Get the second chance, but with targets. And if you don't meet the targets, I think then, yeah, there's an obligation, as I say, to the parents and the children to close down. And, you know, hopefully, the way these things work, that having that made very explicit provides the necessary incentive to make sure it doesn't happen. But from our point of view, as an oversight body, as the authorizing agency, given the history of the school, I think that we, in my opinion anyway, we have no choice but to be very, very draconian in our oversight of the school for the next couple of years.
Is that reflective of the opinion of the other board members as well?
I don't think you should be asking that question, because that's asking us to concur. And we don't, I don't think we have any voting, I mean, collective concurrence is, has to happen by a vote.
Yeah.
For a body.
Okay, so I can't ask if other people feel that way?
Mrs. Parker?
Hold us individually, I'm sure.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I guess I was kind of asking if others would weigh in on that.
What I would say is that I think that a lot of what you are concerned about, Dr. Noel, could be addressed in the MOU.
I agree with that.
And it might not necessarily be in the charter document itself. And so I think, until we get the whole package, as Dr. Noel says, we can't fully judge the new charter.
And I appreciate that, because somewhere in the scribble of notes I have in here, where's the MOU? Because this is a whole package. And some of the, of these kinds of concerns I have probably can only be dealt with in the MOU, because I believe we can only renew it for five years. Is that correct, Dr. Sarvis? Well, it's not a renewal anymore, but we, but when you grant a charter, it's for five years.
You have your charter for five years.
Yeah. And so if we wanted to have any kind of interim options, should things go downhill, that would have to be in the MOU, and you would have to agree to it.
In the, for those of you who were here two or three years ago, when this topic came up, and the MOU was on the agenda, and an attempt was made to make it stronger, in other words, make the requirements for renewal even stronger. And the legal opinion at that time was, no, it's got to be done in the charter. So I just caution you to think too much about the MOU, because you'll get this, maybe get the same legal opinion that, sorry, it's the charter where you control this.
Well, maybe we could get some kind of legal advice on what really belongs where to have that, to get the effect.
Yeah, that can.
Mr. Price is back there with a hand up.
Mr. Price is, do you want to come up and comment on that?
As a general matter, you want to get all of the principal issues and concerns worked out as part of the charter. The MOU comes after the fact. It's more like you've ordered a car, and later on, you're going to work out what upholstery and what interior and so on you want. It's not timely to deal with major issues in the MOU, at least from the Board of Education standpoint, because especially with this school, there's a great deal, I think, of important concerns that need to be addressed from your own standpoint, as well as wanting to approve something that's not going to be taken away by the state. And so I think the leverage that your board has, as far as dispute resolution, length of charter, you don't have to go five years.
Oh, you don't?
That's the maximum. So there are any number of.
Then my point is.
There are any number of issues that need to be taken up. If you're talking about benchmarks and outcomes, those kinds of things can be included. So I think that there is, without suggesting what you should or shouldn't do, there's an opportunity for some dialogue and meeting and conferring with the charter group in order to make sure that the petition that comes before you, at least that there has been an opportunity for issues of concern to you to be addressed. Obviously, it's up to the charter proponents to decide what they're finally going to bring forward. But there's plenty of room and opportunity, I think, for dialogue before the final document is developed.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much, Mr. Price.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I would just chime in there that I think that there's a lot to be done then in terms of discussions with the charter about, you know, I don't know what that would look like exactly, but I'll certainly be thinking about that over the next couple of weeks and giving my own input to Dr. Sarvis to pass on.
I think you tried to point out how this differs from the old one in your presentation, but it might be a good idea to come up with a very concrete list of differences, because that is one of the things that, if it has to go beyond us, probably will be very important.
We do have a list that we used internally, so I'd be happy to afford that to the board.
Go ahead.
I have a question as well. So in terms of oversight, I did a little bit of research from the National, is it National Association of School Chartering Agencies? And they have a list, they have kind of a criteria for what a chartering agency does for oversight. And so they kind of listed out a series of things, like a school chartering agency will check in on particular benchmarks. And there was this kind of long list of things that I think maybe didn't necessarily occur in our previous charter. And so I guess the question I have is, for the oversight piece, what's the area of gray? So is it 100% the responsibility of the charter itself to dictate oversight as well? Or are there other particular practices that a school chartering agency should have? And so I don't mean that in any way to be shifting blame, it's just a real question that I have about oversight versus us embedding in oversight. And we did compare our charters with several rubrics from other states and from other, you know, other districts, Oakland School District, and, you know, we've looked at other district, and none of them really highlighted oversight. And the only place I did find oversight pieces were from organizations that the chartering agencies belong to. And so I am kind of struggling, I think our community's struggling with the idea of, you know, embedding into our charter all of these chartering agency kind of role responsibility pieces. So I do have some question about that gray area. Maybe someone could help with that.
Well, I think that's a very good point. Some of it may be our responsibility, but if I hear Mr. Price correctly, this sounds like one of those areas that would, that should be discussed and negotiated. So if the district is to perform certain oversight functions quite independently of whether you volunteer for them or not, that is certainly something we have to do.
Mrs. Parker?
I really think that the state would be the best resource on this, because the charter office there has, they've come close to shutting down schools many times that the state is responsible for, and they have sort of put turnaround oversight in place. And those, how, I think that those have been sort of implemented through supplemental actions taken by the State Board of Education rather than modifying the original charter. But I, I really think that that's where we need to look. What did they put in place? Did it go into a charter? Did it go into some sort of separate action? I know that we'll get lots of legal opinions on it, but they'll have samples, because they've done it. And I think that we need to sort of follow that model.
May I add that in the past, we've tried to write our oversight responsibilities into the MOU, and we've tried to stay fairly close to ed code on that. I think the board's asking for more than that. I think the board's asking for indications from the school that they are being successful, and honestly so, on a regular basis. And that is something that could well go into the charter document itself.
One idea that was kind of spinning around at one point was having a third-party evaluator agreed upon by the district and the charter organization that would be reviewed annually with both groups or representatives of both groups, is sort of an idea that's still in space somewhere. But it was something that was discussed at some point, and then we kind of were thinking more about the chartering responsibilities versus the responsibility of, you know? So the big question in that piece embedding into our charter is, right now, we're financially much better off, thanks to the support of the school district and getting us back our class size reduction money that was cut after we already started with the class size reduced. So we're okay now, but for areas of financial difficulty for us and for the school board, and we just watched, you know, this very painful experience for you. So the question would be, do we share the expense of that? So there were some sort of questions about that. So I guess one question that I have is, would that be something that people, would we respond to, the idea that we had an outside party come in once a year to do that TPR, third-party, you know, evaluation piece, that we would kind of mutually agree upon who it would be and share the expense? Is that something that people might respond positively to, that kind of oversight written in?
People, or this?
Maybe Bob Noel could weigh in on that.
Either people. I have talked with a couple of the firms that are in that business, and some of them are very reputable. And I know that the Charter School Division has used them on occasion. To me, to me, it always adds credibility when a reputable independent agency makes a report. And in their, in my experience, those reports are never perfect. So you learn a lot in the process. So it's not just giving you a seal of approval. So I think that, to me, that's a very important kind of thing. I talk about third-party or outside evaluation. And one of the things that happens often, and I've learned in my experience in public education, is that quite often, those evaluations are done by people you are kind of picked. They're part of this kind of cottage industry of consultants who are eager to get the jobs. And that's why I look to the more institutionalized organization for that rather than being a small or solo operation. Although, we did have a darn good outside evaluation of a math program some years ago, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And as a result of it, we dropped the program.
Thank you.
I just have a, I just have a few questions. The name, any, have you come to a name or is that still up in the air?
So we have here Cesar Chavez Two Way Immersion School. You can imagine our community has a lot of passion around the name Cesar Chavez, and it's, for some people embodies so much more than a school performance, or it's really a cultural value. So it's very, very difficult to contemplate the idea of removing the name. We do know that that is a potential risk for funding issues and having a name associated with one of the lowest-performing schools in the state. So we are aware of that, and we have a big, deep dive, probably long discussion tomorrow night at our Governance Council meeting about that particular issue. The one that was previously decided upon is Two Way Immersion School, which I know is not radically different, but reflects modern practices and the idea of fidelity to Two Way Immersion. So that was, that's the current name. And tomorrow night, you can drop us an email if you're interested in hearing the drama of how we resolve that issue. But I'm confident that our community will come to a good decision. We always do.
Next question. Is it the intent to have a new Governance Council, or the existing one just moved over to the new?
Saturday at our workshop with our attorney. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about it. I think that one kind of fear is that we'll sort of get rid of everybody who knows all the information about, you know, getting those processes and those pieces in place. So I think we're looking at a transition plan. And part of what we're doing on Saturday is inviting other members of our community who maybe in the past haven't participated. We're pricing out right now also some translation, simultaneous translation devices that we haven't had in the past to help invite more members of our community to participate. So I think we're looking at a transition plan that would allow those kind of key processes to get put in place with a new group of people, but enough of the existing group to make sure that those things, there's not knowledge that's lost in the transition. So I think that's what we're looking at.
Okay. There were a couple of members involved in 2000, 2078 that turned down the board's request to put a higher benchmark. And so, you know, they might have been part of the problem because they should have known better than to let this happen. Dispute resolution. I agree with Mrs. Parker. At least it should be looked at because the current language pretty much monitors the old language. And we have a legal opinion saying that the old language wasn't workable, the mediation portion of it. So that may want to look at that mediation portion of it.
I've asked Mr. Price to look into that as well. A lot of this is somewhat cumbersome. And in our previous meeting, we asked that the new direct language about all renewal issues being handled through dispute resolution be withdrawn, and that has been withdrawn. But what you're seeing is primarily the language that we had seen before. And I think Mr. Price has been taking a look at this and would be able to recommend something that's a simpler process that doesn't have any references to renewal, which is dictated by ed code rather than by some dispute resolution process. And in dispute resolution, you see a couple of pages into it, a whole charter renewal section. And I would think that that would be the primary area that you would focus on to alleviate your anxiety about future performance.
In our regulations about charter approval, there's five reasons we can deny a charter. The first two, the charter school presents an unsound educational program for the students to be enrolled in the charter school. Do you think your plan is unsound?
We think our plan is very sound, and we've consulted other people who are experts who feel that it's very sound. And we're really happy with the education plan piece of it.
And the second is the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition.
I was worried about that one since we came to you before in the fall, and that was definitely a concern. So part of that is this workshop and trying to improve our governance and working through our bylaws to make sure that that's sound. We've done a significant amount of work in terms of overhaul of governance. And I do have to say that our current governing board is significantly different than it was three or four years ago. So we do have quite a bit of turnover, and we'll continue to see a transition into new people. So, I mean, ultimately, you have the decision to decide whether or not you think we have the capacity. Over the last four months, I think that we've really, like I said, in that kind of journey piece, that we've really learned. And I feel like, personally, I feel like the people that in our community have really come together, there's a lot of knowledge that wasn't there before. There's a lot of cohesion around a vision that wasn't there before. And we have a new principal who is particularly skilled and has already been making a splash in our school. So based on that information, I feel like the people here have the capacity to do it, and I hope you do, too.
Dr. Sarvis, what is the timeline from this point forward in the regulations that talks about within 30 days of receiving a petition, we have to do something? When do you envision giving us a petition?
Well, we were hoping to turn around within a week. We wanted to get your feedback. And this MOU piece is something that we need to work together. We obviously didn't want to bring a MOU to you that didn't have any "you" in it. So that's kind of our next step. The key piece was to get some questions from the board members and make sure that we were really clear on what thoughts you had and make this as much of a collaborative process as possible to prevent future communication issues. And so we have, you know, met with district employees, and they gave us some great feedback. And we've incorporated some of that feedback. And after Saturday, we'll have a overhauled set of bylaws to present. So our hope was to turn this around within a week. And I know that my family's really hoping that'll be the case, so.
And just one final thing. On page 68, Terms of the Charter, I think both those paragraphs might have been, never changed. They talk about a renewal, they talk about July 1st, 2009. I have a feeling that that particular section doesn't make a lot of sense, but maybe...
Oh, the renewal, thank you. That was, you're right. Thank you. We'll fix that.
I think that whole section needs to be changed. Before we go further, can we take a 10-minute break?
I just had a couple of quicks before she leaves.
Well, she's not, she's not leaving. We're going to continue the discussion. But I was thinking of taking a break and then coming back and continue the discussion among the board and Dr. Sarvis.
Yeah.
Because the break was nine o'clock at 9:05. That's the closest we've ever been. Okay.
All right.
Dr. Noel?
I just had a couple of questions. I wanted to hear more about your budgeting plans, and particularly at two levels. Who's going to write the financial component of the charter? Of the proposal? And secondly, who's going to, how are you going to do the regular day-in, day-out financial management and reporting?
So, as you do now, this is Nancy Dow.
Use the microphone. Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I sort of wanted to find why Nancy was here.
Yes. Nancy, Nancy's been a great resource, so I'll let her answer your questions.
My entree to Nancy.
Thank you. Nancy Dow.
Okay. Well, we actually did put together a really, I think I found out like three days, within three days, we needed to submit a financial plan, which we did last week. It was a one-year plan. We're planning on doing a three-year plan when we do the final petition, just to give you a heads-up on what's ahead of us. I know it's during these financial hard times, it's a really hard time to start a charter school. But I think that if we do apply for the startup grant and we receive that, and if our class size reduction may or may not continue, we have different scenarios to kind of map out. So we're well aware of those. And I've talked a lot to the governing council, and we'll be talking about those kind of things tomorrow night when we're meeting.
What's the break-even point for, in terms of population growth now under current funding rules? When I was trying to do this, they said that you needed about 350 students before you were solvent. Has that changed?
Usually, I mean, I know that we're starting our charter out with the same amount of kids that we had this year, which is like 240. And then the three-year, and then there's growth a little bit each year, which has been...
So you hit the road running in that sense.
One of my questions is also, what is the cap, too? So that's got to be something that's going to be written in and decided in the charter. And then at that point, stop and see if we're solvent at that point.
I have to ask you, because I can't ask you this. Do you plan, do you plan to use someone like Nancy on a permanent basis?
We use Nancy every day.
I'm here.
Yeah, she's, I mean, she's an employee.
But really, no, but as we have learned, it really matters that the school finances be in competent hands.
Well, that is one area where we have been relatively successful. We haven't really had any financial shortfalls. And this was our first year with a shortfall, which we hustled to really make a ton of cuts mid-year. And fortunately, we were able to get the class size reduction money. But our scenarios all include if we, if this happens, if we don't get a grant, this is what we'll do. If we don't have class size reduction, this is what we'll do. If we have a grant, if we have, because we have kind of multiple scenarios that Nancy's been working with us. And we have increased Nancy's hours this last year, and she's working with the office staff and with Juanita on the daily processes and comparing the budget to actuals and, you know, daily little pieces. So that, they already have met and started talking about that.
And we also, one of the positive things, too, is that we're going to be able to donate, because we have the class size reduction back in place, and a lot of, I want to thank your staff for it because we've all kind of worked really together on that. And actually, our treasurer, who's not here, worked with Pedro Nova's office with the CD on that. And it was a lot of work. I mean, it was $175,000, which was a huge shortfall for us to find out mid-year. So now that we're over that, we have maintained our fund balance, which is $200,000, that we've been carrying through and building up over the years. And that will be able to be transferred to the new charter as a donation. Because part of our closure procedures...
When you close, you...
Is that we could donate that to an existing charter school.
Okay.
So that will help us tremendously in the new charter as far as cash flow. And, you know, those times, those peaks where we're not meeting our payroll, people don't meet our payroll the first year, we're going to have that reserve in place.
Is the startup, public charter schools startup grant program still operating?
Mm-hmm. And we're going to apply for that the day after...
Revolving loan fund?
The day after we're approved with the charter school.
Okay. My next question had to do with special education.
Yeah. That's not my area.
You can answer. Okay.
Do you plan to be an arm of the district?
Well, we have that MOU written, which stays as part of the district, and that's written into the cost there of the MOU as well. And the, we currently are just using the same special education services as Franklin.
The new charter will...
That's right, for, right, for now. We would like to get to the point where we could serve our own population as we grow, but we're definitely building into the charter for this current period to continue to be armed with the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Deacon?
I want to touch on finances briefly, but I don't think you need to get back up there. I'm very glad you got the class size reduction money. And I do think it's important to acknowledge Meg Jete and the staff at the district that worked hard on that. And I guess when we talked earlier about oversight, that now prompts me to think a little bit about how we don't want something like that to ever fall through the cracks again. And you had asked for some guidance about oversight, and I'm not sure how much direction you're getting on that. So I just wanted to talk about a few things because it sounds like it's more important for these to be in the charter language than in the MOU necessarily. But I do think that there needs to be some, an oversight piece. And as nice as it would be to hire someone from the outside, I'm not sure financially we're going to be in a position to share a cost to do that. I mean, you are your own school, and we would hope that you would be able to provide information to us as the district, as the LEA. And the kinds of things that I would like to see are kind of regular reports on kind of financial, the financial status, where you are in your assessments. I know in here, you talk about doing them regularly and then reporting, I guess, to your Governance Council twice a year. I'm not sure if, how regular is, what that means. Does that mean twice a year, those assessments, or more frequent than that?
For those particular assessments, twice a year. We do currently provide a report to the school district.
The two interim reports.
The two interim reports. So we currently have that particular oversight piece.
Right. So, but I don't know how then...
They adopted the first interim, second interim, and the unaudited act.
Four. Right. But I'm just trying to figure out how, we don't want something like the class size reduction to happen, loss of funds to happen again. And so I don't know how that played into the interim reports or didn't. But there's other things, obviously, on the financial landscape besides what we're getting in those interim reports. So that would be important to know. The other thing would be, and again, I, you know, I guess I would like to get feedback about the status of supplies, curriculum, facilities. You know, when we read Pat Morales' report, I think all of us were pretty taken aback at some of the things that were in there that were missing, like instructional supplies and the fact that teachers had to go out and kind of provision themselves. And so I would really like to see some way that the board is made aware that everything, we have to report to the county under this Williamson Act, you know, that somehow that the school Governance Council would provide that information to us on a regular basis. So just some basic benchmarks all along the continuum are things that I would like to hear from the Governance Council that come to our board.
Mrs. Parker?
That is one other thing that I had noticed in the beginning. You have your whole lists of the shals. And I know charter schools can opt out of the Williams Act, but because of the situation that we saw had happened over the years, apparently at Cesar Chavez, I think there needs to be a shal comply with the Williams Act in there. And the Williams Act is one where we have to regularly report to the county. The county assesses that we, that all of our students have textbooks and materials that are necessary for those that don't know.
Sufficiency of materials.
Other discussion points?
Mr. Herron, we've listened to the board discussion. Would you like us to come back with a list of items or a list of suggested wording that we feel you would be looking for?
I think it should, I mean, you can do that, but it actually should go back to the Governance Council also as quickly as possible. Mrs. Parker?
I really think it's very important that we have another discussion around the suggestions that we've given to Ms. Fleming, because we've each sort of given individual suggestions and comments, but until we see it in a synthesized way with legal language suggested, I don't think that they can really do a high-quality job on any changes to the charter. And so I think we need to discuss this again, I'm afraid, Ms. Fleming's family, that...
They left.
Because my two concerns are both that we're still a little bit amorphous about the language, and also that the state has not, I think we need more direction from the state. And I would hate for it to be a situation where you've, yay, we're done with the charter, and we've handed off this new charter. And then the state comes in and says, wait, you know, we need to see these elements if it's going to be truly considered a new charter. And so I'm a little worried that that not get rushed through and give the state some time to give us direction.
We are facing a time element of, if we took 90 days, that's three months, you know.
Well, once you submit, we have to... Well, once you submit, we have to, we have to respond within two months.
Right. So, I think they should be going forward on hearing all this and making appropriate changes. We should all, if we have any other suggested changes, make sure Dr. Sarvis gets them. Dr. Sarvis should be putting them together, and everybody working towards a common goal.
I guess I'm not comfortable with that, because it seems to me it's their charter. They're a private, they're a nonprofit corporation, and it's their responsibility, not ours, to write their charter for them. I think that, I think that the district has been appropriately helpful, but ultimately, it's their responsibility, and we're the ones who have to make the judgment.
Mrs. Parker?
Well, I guess that's my concern, because you can say that it's their responsibility, but we're the ones that are going to vote up or down on it. And so, I would like to give them as much positive direction as we can for them to be successful when they present the charter to us.
Mrs. Cordero?
I agree. I think, you know, just like that we have their language now, and yet, we're still asking questions and making recommendations and making suggestions and raising concerns and et cetera, I think, to the extent that we can give them language that we say, okay, this is what we, this is language that we would support, we'll still be entirely up to the group to decide whether they want to incorporate that language or not. But, I don't, I feel like it would be unfair and also inefficient to just say, go back and see if you can kind of decide what you think we said to you and what language you think we will approve of, and then come back and show it to us, and we'll tell you whether we approve or not, and then you can go away and revise it again, when we could just give you the language, and you could say, yes, we want this, or no, we don't.
I would simply add that we are establishing a precedent, and that other groups are discussing the possibilities of seeking a charter school, and that I would think, out of fairness and equity, that any support and help that we, both our staff, and I gather staff is already helping, and the board in helping people talk through what's going to pass this very board, would be a, something that would be extended to all people who want to develop charter schools in the future.
I guess I would just add that if I was in your position, I would take what we all have said, and I would start work tomorrow on trying to revise it. So, if we do come back to this board, we have something in front of us that you've already, you know, worked your way through. That's just my opinion. But, yes, it probably will come back to us, but I'd hate to have you just sit around waiting for us to get back to you. Mrs. Parker?
Just that I feel like Cesar Chavez is in kind of a unique position, because this is the process that we've used with our charter renewals, where we've had a charter come, we've suggested very specific language, we've seen specific language, obviously, in the MOU, but also in the charter itself, where we've sat up here and debated and said, really, we think it needs to be this order for, you know, admissions and the whole thing. And we haven't done that for new charters, but you're a district charter as it stands, and I really feel like it's a unique situation and not something that we will see in a typical, the typical run of things.
Okay, if any of us have additional little things that we'd like to see wording tweaked or changes or added, please get them to, I think, Dr. Sarvis. And then, Dr. Sarvis can also listen to what we've said, and I see, I don't personally see anything wrong with Dr. Sarvis coming up with a list and saying, Lee, these are our interpretations of what the board said, and you've listened to it, too. Okay? Anything further for Lee?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all the hard work. I also have been at your meetings, and I know what you're going through, and I guess I'm coming tomorrow night, too, so. So, it's been, it's been a twosome, and it's been very pleasurable going through the whole process with you. Okay, let's go on to E4. Action.
In ca...
Okay, approval, board action on student discipline cases number 09/10-15, 09/10-18, 09-10-28, and 09/10-29. Do I have a motion on 09/10-15?
Yes. In case 09-10-15, I move to approve the stipulated one-school-year suspended expulsion agreement to Alta Vista.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously?
In case 09/10-18, move to approve the stipulated one-school-year expulsion agreement to Summit High.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously?
In case 09/10-28, move to approve the one-school-year expulsion.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously?
In case 09/10-29, move to approve the one-school-year expulsion.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously? Okay, we are now back to F2, update on status of special education. I'd like to point out, it's scheduled for 9:45, and it's 9:36.
Well, we're way ahead of ourselves, aren't we? How did that happen? Tom Guarardo is our executive director of special education.
Thank you, members of board of education and Dr. Sarvis. This plan that you see before you is something that Carol Miller and I started working on, and since her departure, have been able to add other items on there that came from the large stakeholder group. And what we want to be able to do, we've changed the matrix around to include the activities to be done, the cost, and a status update that will continue to come back to you as far as where we are, whether we've implement, completed it, whether it's ongoing in progress. There is a budget piece to this, as well as evaluation indicators. Following tonight's presentation, I'd like to be able to take this back to the stakeholder group and be able to have them prioritize the items that have a monetary value attached to that. So, you know, the value attached to this document is $606,468, and that is within the budget that we currently have available to us. I want to just highlight some of the areas, for example, on page number three, we want to be able to get site administrators, counselors involved, not only with KSmith and Aries, but also be able to open up other avenues so that they know what's happening with special education students and IEPs and triennials and so forth. So, that access has been given. We continue to have professional development on that, not only to administrators, but to school counselors also at the high school level. On page four, we had a meeting, I guess it's been about a week and a half, two weeks ago, Dr. Noel and Dr. Sarvis and Dr. Mills and I with UCSB. We're going to have a follow-up meeting we're trying to arrange at this point, and that revolves around the surveys. And I've asked the stakeholder group to submit questions that they may have for staff, for parents, even for students, depending on the age level there. So, you'll notice that quite a few of these indicators on the far right revolve around the surveys, and that's the partnership that we've entered into with UCSB to be able to assist us in that process. Page six, so much of the recommendations and prioritization from the stakeholders was around procedures that needed to be done. And the directors, programs, specialists meet on a weekly basis, and we get input from the different special ed staff at the school sites. And the procedures manual, we have started placing those out there and providing professional development for staff also in terms of following certain protocols. On page eight, because professional development was such a key, key component to this, professional development for administrators, general ed teachers, special ed teachers, instructional assistants, and these continue. We've had training with administrators on safe, due process. At the end of this month, Nick Martin will be coming back for collaboration in the IEP, facilitating IEP and so forth. We've done quite a bit of customer service training around that with our, first, we started with our district office clerical staff. This next time, which is about two weeks away from now, we'll be rolling it out to the school sites and being able to have that available to the office staff there. Other professional development, we've been able to have some autism training for instructional assistants, so our teachers have attended there as well. And so, that continues in terms of the professional development, and we do have, of course, a subgroup that continues to meet around a long-term plan for professional development of all the different stakeholders, including administrators, general ed teachers, special ed teachers, and instructional assistants. And the one, the one last area that I really want to, want to highlight on page 10, programs and services. The subgroup continues to meet. We have program specialists. Dr. Carrie Mills heads that up. We have parents participating in on that. And there was the scope of programs across the district, scope of services that was shared with the large stakeholder group at our last meeting. And I think we're very, very glad to see that there were a lot more programs in there than we thought we had. There are some gaps in there, and that's the reason why this subgroup exists, is to continue to take a look at where the articulation is lacking and where the support in there. But, that was a clear indication in putting together that, I think, I think it was the first time it had been done in the district, was a couple of comments that we heard when we presented that, and really gave us a good indication of what kind of programs we have throughout the district and where those, those gaps are in the articulation of the K-12 program. So, the next step from here is to be able to share the, this with, with this large stakeholder group and have them start prioritizing some of these areas that have dollar amounts attached to them, and to continue to bring this format, which has been a compilation of what Carol Miller started, of additional priorities that were laid out by the stakeholder group. So, if you'll notice, I mean, this is about twice the length of the previous document, and that's because we've added the other priorities that were provided to us by that stakeholder group. So, this matrix will be the format that will, you will continue to see, updated with the status of where we are on this. Will entertain questions?
Let's have a public comment. Public comment, please.
Okay, we have Catherine Abarca, followed by Lourdes Uribe. Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to speak to you about the stakeholders group. Our last meeting was in February. Until today, we didn't have another meeting scheduled, and then magically, today, when the report for special education was on the agenda, we got an email confirming the date, which is in April. Hopefully, this time, we'll have an agenda, we'll actually be able to get something accomplished, and we'll be facilitated to stay on task this time. Parents, including myself, have attended all the meetings. We volunteered all of our times to committees that were formed. We've taken time off our jobs. We paid for sitters for our children and committed time to collaborate with the district. I'm on the organizational committee and the communications committee. The organizational committee has met twice, and today, again, we got an email with another date, March 24th. As for the communications committee, a program specialist was put in charge of that upon Carol leaving, and they abandoned that job after one meeting. So, the most important key thing that FICMAT talked about was communication, and that committee is still up in the air. To tell you the truth, I've been sitting and really waiting patiently, giving people a chance for something to be done about this huge undertaking that we have to do. And I really feel like we're stalled. No one's communicating. We have a vision statement that's sitting out there in the air, floating. We're supposed to have a survey for parents, teachers, and programs. That's not happening yet. I know that the parents did an extremely huge job of putting a bunch of questions together for that group. Despite all the forward efforts of the parents and the stakeholders, we're going nowhere, and I feel like a train derailed. There's no plan of how we're going to implement these action items, and some of the administration seems to think that our problems are all resolved because we have new staff. Systemic challenges in this district require more than just a change in personnel. Those of us parents who are in the trenches every day advocating for the students can clearly see that we have a long way to go yet. I know that you, as a board, are committed to continuing the stakeholders committee, and you're committed to giving our special education department a foundation upon which we can build. And to be fair, there have been accomplishments, and I appreciate the staff that is pushing to get things done. A very good example of that would be the special education website, which I commend Barbara Chiani every time I speak to her. For moving forward on that. However, a revised and improved website is simply not enough. There's so much work to be done. We need a strategy, a vision, and a plan for how we're going to get there. We're willing to work, so please, let's get going. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Abarca. Lourdes Uribe?
Good night. Grateful to be here this evening. My name is Lourdes Uribe. I have no voice today, but I'm here to share my concern about the youngest of my three sons in the special education department. I have questions and concerns, and I'm a little confused. I have health problems. My back hurts right now. And I really appreciate that, the effort to follow me and my thinking. When you're going to speak about your kids is emotional and is difficult. My son, Christian, is a student at Dos Pueblos High School. He's the youngest of my son. He's the one who got reading therapy through the district. I was really grateful and appreciated. As you can see, he made the, those societies, whatever they are, honor something and another honor society. He's very bright, 135 IQ. But, I'm still in shock, you know, here as I share these insights with you about the impact of being part of high school society. For my boys, sports is a big thing. It is and it's not related to a special education, to be honest with you. Plainly stated, I would like to say what I say before here. We need fair trials for sports in high schools. We need to see kids being, choose to be part of teams. I'm speaking volleyball at Dos Pueblos, you know, for their abilities. My son was devastated because he didn't make a team. And if you think about a student just not making a team, you know, it may, it may not be a big deal. My son had a perfect attendance before that. My son was very motivated to go to school. And as I'm sharing with you this information, I'm also, you know, learning. I didn't know how important for students it was to be part of athletics and to be part of activities after...
Thirty seconds?
After, I was hoping that my husband will make it here for another three minutes. I'm sorry. There goes my thirty seconds. Here, on one, a survey that our special ed director gave us, and there's a question that we answered, where it says that you shall have the opportunity to participate in school extracurricular activities, after-school activities. I will say, it's very difficult for regular students, and for special ed students, it's almost impossible. And... And one thing, just maybe five more seconds, we need training for athletic directors and for coaches, because today they told us that they wouldn't talk to us, you know, about our concerns, because they wouldn't talk to students, to parents, just because a kid didn't make a team. They don't understand that my son is at risk.
Thank you.
You know, to drop school.
Thank you.
And if that happens, you know, schools for kids with dyslexia are $88,000, far away from home. I don't think we need to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Uribe?
More questions of Tom? Mrs. Deacon?
I had a question, because this is the first time I've seen the draft vision statement in, in writing this way. I know at one of the stakeholder meetings, there was a lot of discussion about this. Could you just tell the board how this, how this was formalized?
Well, there was actually a subgroup that, that met numerous times on this, and about a week and a half ago, I also put out to the stakeholders, just an FYI on this vision statement, for some feedback, and we received that. At our next meeting, we'll give that opportunity for that subgroup to present on this in order to, to make a recommendation to finalize it.
I'd like to share this with, is that the vision statement? Yeah, this is a kind of document, obviously, that would have been great to be in the package, in the, in the board, board package. I think it came to us tonight.
Correct.
I have a question, just economics. What number did you say all these add up to? Okay. Mr. Smith, where does this money come from? I mean, do we have $600,000? Let's just hypothetically say, hey, go for it.
That's really a Meg question, because she's been working closely with the ARA special ed budget.
Can you repeat your question?
Yes. Let's just hypothetically, we said, hey, go, go for it. Spend the $603,000. Where is it?
Well, we have budgeted, as you saw in the board brief about the, the ARA money, what is spent, what is left over, where are those, where we've placed those bucket of money. Is, is it, the last time I saw one of these, the action plan, we matched it up, as you saw, with the dollar amounts. If we want to reallocate those dollar amounts now, we can still do that as long as we still have the money available.
Thank you.
And is the high school has more money right now than the elementary?
Thank you. Dr. Norrell?
I have a couple of questions, but I see one item twice. Laptop computer at each school site, $29,656.
Your microphone?
On page three, row two, column four, it talks about, there's six, $29,656 allocated for laptop computers, and that same number appears again somewhere in here. Hold on. I had not seen this until just now, so bear with me. Yes, on page 10, row, row seven, column four.
We'll take care of that.
That's, that was just a little, I don't know whether that's a typo or what, but in any event. I don't understand the, I don't understand the justification for the numbers, number one, and I don't understand the significance of them appearing in this matrix. Are these decisions that have been made? Are these proposals for decisions? If we leave these stand, do these constitute commitments? And the last question is, have these been discussed with the stakeholder group?
Okay. To the first, as Meg mentioned, these are merely placeholders. These figures came from a couple of meetings that Carol Miller and I had with Meg. So these are placeholders. The next step, as I mentioned before, is to be able to have the stakeholder group prioritize these. As long as we stay within the total dollar amount available, these can be massaged around. But we wanted to make sure that there was a placeholder so that the money didn't get spent on other things.
Well, why does it have to be broken down in these squares, in these particular, in a very select few of the particular actions to be, to be held? I mean, she's not going to spend it. Aren't you, you're not going to spend it, are you?
I try not to spend any money.
Yeah, the next, then, excuse me, Dr. Norrell, the next step is for this document to go back to the stakeholders, and eventually it'll come back to us, and.
Is that, is that the plan?
That's the plan. This, this is, you know, this is, it's a conference, it's part of his report, but it came to us tonight, and there's been no public review of it.
So, so when I see on row three, pardon, on column, on page three at the bottom, establish an ADR process, target audience, all parents, all staff, parents, community, responsible entity, the executive director, resources needed, $60,000, that this is in progress, and the procedures, higher, procedures, hire, reduce complaints. That doesn't mean that $60,000 is all used earmarked for that.
No. Again, this is a placeholder, and that includes not only the possibility of the ombudsman, but we're looking for a system that we need to put in place called alternative, the ADR process. So it's more than just hiring someone. It's a process that we need to put in place.
So when I see on page seven, identify available training and support opportunities such as school site, district level, local slash outlying, self-pas, county office, other public agencies, online courses, network sites, $75,000. Which, I mean, I have two issues. One is that I don't understand how identifying those things costs 75 grand, but the other thing is, if I hear you correctly, it doesn't really mean you're going to spend $75,000 on that.
Not on that specifically, but if you'll remember, one of the first items that we designated was professional development, and originally, we targeted $75,000 for that. Since then, that's been increased to $100,000. So it's $75,000 here, and we have $25,000 in another area that can be massaged according to where the needs are.
Well, I could see spending $75,000 on professional development, but not on, on identifying available sources and opportunities for special, for professional development. Seems to me that's a fairly, fairly inexpensive activity, and that you save your money for the actual training, for the, you know, to pay the trainer or to send people to training. Anyway, I just want, I mean.
That's what it's mainly targeted for.
My, my point is simply that, and, and I've reserved your assurance and Mr. Aaron's assurance, that we're really talking about allocating $606,403. Am I on?
Well, the special, the ARA money that we received was more than that.
Yeah.
And I don't have the document that you're looking at in front of me either, but off the top of my head, I believe there was more like 800 and some odd thousand in the high school and 500 some odd thousand in the elementary. So the 649 number, I'm not sure where we're pulling that.
I thought I heard you say.
And, and I could, you know, it's late. I don't, I can't remember that.
No, there, there's more resources available than this amount.
Okay. All right. One last question. Have you consulted your two directors on this document?
We have the sub, the subgroup chair people, and I met with the two of them, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday.
Have they seen this before tonight?
They've seen bits and pieces of it, not the entire document.
This reflects their opinions?
It does, in their particular area. For example, Dr. Mills is in charge of the program services, and so she's had input in that piece, and Dr. Britton Bass is in charge of the professional development. She's had input into that, and I've also given them a dollar amount that is available for each of those subgroups.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Deacon?
I'd just like to say, to be fair, I think we needed a starting place with, with amounts, even though they may not be what specifically is ended up being spent. With, with a group as large and, and heterogeneous as the stakeholder group, I don't think you can just walk in and say, how do we spend over $600,000? So I think we needed a starting place and, and then to work with the group from there. So I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the fact that there's some placeholder figures here, because hopefully you and your colleagues have been thinking a lot about, you know, why you should be spending money in, in different areas. I did just want to mention that last, was it last week? We got a version from the C group where they had, had also put some dollar amounts in, and I'm hoping that, that you've had a chance to take a look at that, because again, that might expedite the process once you get to the stakeholder meeting where you already have input from members of the stakeholder group.
Okay. I'll take a look at the document.
I guess I've got a simple question. Is anything getting done? Are we spending any money on anything?
We have mainly in the area of instructional supplies, protocols, and professional development.
So we're spending some money?
We're spending.
Have the, have the schools been solicited for what they need, and are we providing what they need?
We put together a need survey that went out to the administrators. We are continuing to receive those in terms of what the needs are. The next step is, is once we plug this in, is to figure out what the resources that are left and be able to allocate that on an ADA basis to schools, and have each school put together a plan of how they're going to utilize those resources.
And so that request for needs, you've received it, but now, until you, until this goes through the process, there's no money to respond to those needs? And so we're going to be through the whole school year before they get any needs?
Those needs are still coming in. Not all of them.
When did you put out the request for those?
Oh, it's been probably about four or five weeks.
Okay. I mean, is, do you have any money set aside to handle those needs?
Yes, we do. Meg and I sat down and have some figures on a per, a, per special ed student identified basis that we can allocate to each school site, and that's when we will request a plan from the school sites for that money.
Those that have sent you their needs, can, can you allocate the money to them, say, tell us how you, how you're going to spend this? Can we, do we have to wait for all of them, all of them to respond?
We can move on that. Yes.
Yeah. One of the things that I've found is that if you ask somebody what they need, and they tell you, if you don't respond quickly, they just think it's another, you know, another gimmick that's going on, so.
We can do that.
I'd like to see us move and, and start some action on these things. And I'm glad you said there are things going on, but I keep seeing all these plans, and this is, I mean, this is a brand-new action plan. We've had so many plans. I'd just love to see something start getting done on some of these plans. One time you gave us the document that said, and you were going to document every time you completed something in progress. Haven't seen that since we had it the first time, so. It just, you get the feeling that it's just slow.
Well, there were two or three plans out there, and that's why.
There's a lot of plans out there.
Well, that's why this document is an accumulation of what Dr. Miller started with the other priorities that came from the stakeholders. This is the comprehensive. If you take a look at it, it's at least twice the size of anything you've seen, and that's why. We included the other priorities that came from the stakeholder group.
And when is the next stakeholder group?
We couldn't figure, at the last meeting, we tried to target a date for the third week of March, and it just wasn't working out, so the earliest we could get together is April 7th.
Anybody else? Okay?
I just have, I have a quick comment. I'm wondering if we could maybe request that if the, the task force is going to meet on, or the stakeholders group is going to meet on April 7th, if by our second meeting in April, you could bring us back a prioritized document and plans for the expenditures and a, a firm sense of, of what the stakeholders group wants, you know, and so that there's a, we have a clear plan that is moving forward that says, okay, you know, we're meeting tonight, here's the plan, tomorrow we are going to do X, if you approve this, so that it does move immediately forward after that, after that meeting.
We could actually start the process prior to that. I can put together something and send it out to the stakeholders and get them thinking along the prior, the lines of prioritizing.
To me, there's a lot of, I mean, I'll just say, there's a lot of things in this plan that, that don't need our approval. I mean, it just seems that a lot of things are just ordinary course of business, you know, take action and move. And it, it just seems that some of those things should, should be started. Okay? Anybody else? Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Gee, there's nothing to go back to for consent items, I don't believe. Coming events, I think we have the list of coming events. Is anything further?
No, that's it.
Future agenda items. Boy, we have a lot of them. Okay, let's just start at the end.
Well, no, I mean, it's just, obviously, we now need to have a special meeting, maybe a 15-minute meeting.
When?
You give it, you give a minute, it'll take an hour. A 15-minute special meeting sometime before March 15th, so it has to be between today or tomorrow, it's 24 hours from now, and March 14th, so.
We, we once had one on a Friday afternoon, didn't we, one time?
Yeah, so this, this Friday for 15 minutes, if everybody's.
It could be this Friday?
This Friday. Do we need, now, do we need to pass a motion for that, and, or just?
No.
No, we can just schedule it.
Okay.
But can we settle on a time?
What time?
Afternoon is better for me.
The later, the better is for, for me.
Like?
5:30 for Kate? 5:30, 5:30 is fine for 15 minutes. Yeah, and then we can have cocktails, but no. I mean, it's, 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 you know, I don't want to make light of it, because it is a, it is a difficult topic, and we're going to have unhappy people around that as well, so, but I, I do think that it's important that we take action on this to, to be fair and, and above board in terms of that whole child development program.
Friday at 4 o'clock?
Is 4 o'clock? 4 o'clock is fine with me, if that works for you.
4 o'clock is good for me.
Friday at 4 o'clock. Okay?
Can I ask that that be, that a little extra notice be given on that on the website?
Good, we could do that. We'll do more than 24 hours.
A little flash, this item will be thing, because Kate's right, it's important and.
Just that one item.
One item.
Well, let me ask, because a couple of board members have been privy to this discussion and may actually know more about it than I do, but I announced earlier that we had grant money coming to us for the extension of, of our gang violence prevention worker, outreach worker, and, and that is contingent upon matching funds. Well, to my mind, we need to go looking for whatever funding we could, we could apply to that, but we can't wait too long on that, because we'll lose the person who's doing that work. This is a future agenda. This is a future agenda item, so should we, should we bring this back to you on that Friday as well? Or would you?
I thought the funding was going to come from the task force.
Yeah, I thought we had a little left over on the other budget.
Well, if we have a little left over, it would only be, it would only be used to continue that work right now. Mr. Gonzalez? Now, now, we're not agendized for a major discussion, so just answer very briefly.
I will simply share with you that we would need to match 30,000 to 40,000, and those funds currently do not exist in the original allocation.
So the question is, is that a discussion we need to have immediately, or can we wait until our next regular meeting, two weeks from now?
It's very clear from the Bauer Foundation that they will not make a move until the district commits.
Mrs. Parker?
So in other words, right now, the program has been suspended.
Let me, let me make one correction to that. Let me make one correction to that. After Monday's meeting, we communicated with the superintendent the intent and the wishes of that committee. We have established a bridge program, as we spoke about on Monday, to continue the work on a very short interim basis that gives.
We're not scheduled to talk about this, so, you know.
Well, then it's not a 15-minute meeting anymore. It might be a 30-minute meeting.
What's the pleasure? 30?
It's fine with me.
That's okay with me as long as we're not being asked to find, are we being asked to find that money in 15 minutes?
I don't really have any basis to discuss it. No, we put it on the agenda.
Yeah, put it on agenda. Well. If we all, any of us have any individual comments, please let Brian know.
Okay, I have one other future agenda item, but it doesn't, not for Friday. And that is, I'd like to have a discussion around our practice of suspending students from the graduation ceremonies as part of their suspension.
Would you like that to be a future board discussion?
I would like that to be a future agenda item, yeah.
In the board brief, there was a document from Mrs. Deteau on the charter school intra-district transfers in lieu of property taxes, which made it appear that we're educating an awful lot of children outside our district. Are we going to have a discussion of that? Is that, can we have that on a future agenda item? And it looked pretty horrendous. You said what? Severe. Yeah, that's one of the problems sometimes on a board brief. But God, you read that, and you say we should be taking action on it.
So are we going to be a state test case then for this?
Okay, okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay, golly, what does that leave us? Adjourn? Let's adjourn at 10:12, two minutes after the schedule close.